Dick Kemp.
Because I would also like to, you know, Ray Dorsey.
Good evening, everyone. Please take your seats. I'd like to call to order the October 2nd, 2007 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please? Council members Draymond.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Mayor Najarian.
Here.
And Mr. Weaver, will you lead us in the flag salute?
Join with me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. On this, the first meeting of October, we pray and reflect on the Glendale character and ethics word of the month for this month, which is cooperation. The project encourages everyone who works or lives in Glendale to work together for a common goal. Famous American cleric and spiritual leader Preston Bradley once said that the world basically and fundamentally is constituted on the basis of harmony. Everything works in cooperation with something else. Let us pray that we remain aware of this necessary harmony as we move forward in our debate and discussions this evening. Let us remember that the most challenging tasks before us can be met best when we work in concert together. Let us pray that we will not be led into temptation to put individuals above the collective and work to better our community for all. Amen. May we have your report, please?
Agenda for the October 2nd, the agenda for the October 2nd, 2007 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, September 27, 2007, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver.
Yes, I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of Dick Kemp, friend of 20, 30 years of mine. I think he lived in Glen Oaks Canyon the longest of anybody alive, 82 years. With him gone, I guess I'm now the senior member of Glen Oaks Canyon, as far as I know. It's time to be corrected, but I've only got 68 years in there, so. But all the years, we worked together on, we worked on the Sleepy Hollow Project to stop the ridge lines from being removed, the creation of the secondary ridge line ordinance. We worked on that together. He was on my team for the hillside ordinance when, as President Homer's courting council, and we worked extensively to develop alternatives to the opposition in terms of hillside development. I think he designed more high, more school buildings in the state of California than any person alive, hundreds of school buildings. And while he attended Glen Oaks Elementary, he came back, and the addition that was put on by, put on by the school was designed by Dick Kemp and his company, known he and his wife Carol for many years. One story I got to tell you about him just goes to show what happens in life. One time, he had gone up into San Joaquin Valley in the morning to go to a school site. He stopped on the way back down through the valley, fast food place, got some food, ate, came home, sat down on the bed, and he just sat there, and Carol came up and says, "What's wrong, Dick?" Says, "I don't feel so good." She says, "I'm taking you to emergency right now." She piled him in the car, took him down to Adventist Hospital, took him in after emergency, and they had a big crowd there, and said, "Well, sit down, we'll get to you in time." She says, "Hey, what if somebody's, you think somebody's having a heart attack?" The doors opened, the nurses came out, grabbed him, yanked him, took him in, put him down on the bed, and he died. Only because he was there, they were able to bring him back, and he lived a number of years. That's where I put the message of the good Lord moves in mysterious ways. It was not his time. For one thing, I know he did, he spent a number of years working as a consultant for free of charge on our new police building. He meant a lot to this community, and I'm going to miss him greatly. His, he'll have, his funeral will be this Thursday at Holy Family at 11:00 a.m., so any of you that knew him, I'm sure you'd appreciate, he and Carol and the family would appreciate you being there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I was going to add, I met Dick in the 1970s, and he was a wonderful person who volunteered with numerous organizations all over Glendale. He was also a very hard worker, like, unlike some people that get involved in projects and really volunteer and then don't do anything. That wasn't Dick. He always spent lots of time helping others achieve their goals, and just a wonderful man. I'm sorry to hear the news.
Mr. Draymond.
Well, it seems that the newspaper today was full of sad news, and another that I'd like to mention and also ask that we adjourn tonight's meeting also in memory of Rayford Dorsey, who also passed away. Ray Dorsey is known to many in this city. One of the pioneer retailers in the North Glendale area, passed away at 98. Many of you know him, I know, but to me, it's a, also, he was a special man. He was a friend of my father's.
Yeah, me too.
A longtime merchant and civic leader in the Montrose, Prisana Valley, and North Glendale area. Originally, he was born in Pogalusa, Louisiana, worked for the S.H. Kress Company, eventually was working for the Erasco Five and Dime Company, and one of the stores he was managing was in Montrose, and decided he would go off on his own. And from that moment forward, Ray became a benefactor to many people in the city and the city itself. He, aside from creating Dorsey's originally toy store, then department store, the large, constructing in the early 60s, the largest, one of the largest buildings, actually the largest building in our area in the north part of the city, and was one of the original five men who thought up the concept of the Montrose Shopping Park, was involved in the creation of it, the research for it, and the hiring of the architects involved. Ray was a wonderful man, a wonderful human being, great humanitarian friend and supporter of mine and many, many others, and advisor, and he'll be missed greatly. And I appreciate the time. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and, thank you. And I think I need to make a statement. As everyone knows, we had a rather unusual city council meeting last week, perhaps unlike any others that, any other that we had had previously, at least in my recollection. But I'd just like to bear out, and if anyone at home is wondering, or those in the audience, the reports from the newspapers of the Glendale City Council collapsing and imploding or cannibalizing each other is not true. We are here, we are committed, all of us committed, to serving the city in every way possible, and we are going to do the business of the city as efficiently and as fairly as we can. And let's move on to the next item, item three.
Item three is agenda preview for the meeting of October 9, 2007.
Mr. McFaul.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, we'll be picking up once again on the discussions in the capital improvement program. The meeting will start at 9:30. There's no specific items on the redevelopment or housing agencies, although there is a joint meeting of the city council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, and that will be to have the report submitted back to the council and the agency on the use of redevelopment tax increment to fund parks and recreation, parks and libraries. On the city council agenda, there is a number of items that will be considered that evening. The Director of Water and Power will be submitting a report on the Chevy Chase 968 reservoir station replacement, reservoir pump station replacement. There'll be a, an associated item with that if it becomes necessary for council, and that would be a resolution of necessity regarding that same location. Originally, there was intended the adoption of ordinances, two ordinances regarding the establishment of street setbacks on East Glen Oaks Boulevard. Council will be considering next week actually an item to continue those until November 13th. Explanation will be provided in the staff report next week. So also, two more, two additional action items. The Director of Human Resources will be providing a memorandum of understanding between the city of Glendale and the GPOA confirming the agreement previously entered into and agreed to with the GPOA. And lastly, the Director of Parks and Recreation with a contract for proposed design work for Maple Park. That would be it.
Thank you. The next item, please.
Item 3B is proclamation designating October 2007 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Mr. Kasakian, I believe the proclamation's right in front of you. Thank you. And is Joan Clanton here? Would you please step forward? I have a proclamation for you, and it goes as follows. Whereas October 2007 is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and October 19th, 2007, is National Mamography Day, and whereas breast cancer continues to cast its troubling shadow on so many of our families, touching our mothers and daughters, our sisters, friends, teachers, and coworkers, and whereas nearly 180,000 new cases of female breast cancer will be diagnosed in 2007, and close to 40,000 will die from the disease, and whereas an estimated 2,030 new cases of male breast cancer will be diagnosed in 2007, and over 450 will die of the disease, and whereas early detection and prompt treatment can significantly reduce suffering and deaths caused by this disease, and whereas mammography is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes that may be cancer, long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt, and whereas the importance of monthly breast self-examination cannot be overemphasized as a lifesaving method of early detection in combination with clinical breast exams beginning at age 20 and yearly mammograms after age 40. Now, therefore, I, R. Najarian, Mayor of the city of Glendale, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2007 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and October 19th, 2007, is hereby proclaimed as National Mamography Day in the city of Glendale. Clanton.
On behalf of the American Cancer Society. On behalf of the American Cancer Society, I proudly accept this proclamation, and I think it says it all. I'm 11-year survivor of breast cancer, and I just want to reiterate, women, please get your mammograms, do your self-exams, and have your clinical tests every year. Thank you again, very much.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, as you can see, we have four councilmen here currently. I have a commitment at 8:00, at which time I must leave no later than 8:00 from the council chambers. And I realize that we do have a rather interesting item in the public hearings portion of the agenda, that's item nine. I am going to take item nine out of order and have the clerk read that into the record at this point, and at which point, if at, if and when I do leave council chambers, I'm going to turn over the gavel to my colleague, Mr. Weaver, who is serving as the mayor pro tem. And as you know, he's fully qualified to run the meeting. You've seen him just last year and several years before that. So let's go to item nine.
Sir Mayor and council, at nine, which is under hearings, 9A is Director of Planning Regarding Appeal of Design Review Board Case Number 2-PDR 2006-007 Located at 2023 Sierra Place. And 9A1 is motion sustaining the Alternatives Assessment Panel's decision to approve the Design Review Board application, and 9A2 is motion reversing Alternatives Assessment Panel's decision to approve the Design Review Board application.
Now, thank you. Before I get in and actually open the public hearing, as is obvious, we only have four councilmen here. We did receive a written request by the applicant. Is that correct, Mr. Howard, Mr. Hagani?
Both the applicant and the appellant sent written requests last Thursday.
To?
To the case planner, based on the understanding that only three councilmen would be present today. The applicant requested to continue, and the appellant requested to reserve the right to request to continue tonight if she so desires tonight.
That's correct. Initially, I was not going to be able to attend this meeting in any form. However, due to some flexibility in my schedule, I was able to remain, hopefully, until 8:00. I would like to invite the applicant and the appellant to the podium to address only the issue of the continuance. Are you interested in going forward with the matter, the public hearing at this date?
Or wait for 5:00.
I'm sorry?
Or wait.
Or, obviously, or wait until we have a full council to hear the issues and make a decision. So if, and I'm not sure who's who, Mr. Starburg.
Mr. Mayor, while they come to the dais, it might be of interest for them to note that just in reviewing the future agendas, it looks like the November, the meeting of November 13 would be the first opportunity where the agenda would allow this kind of a weighty item to go on, and you'd have a full city council. Virtually after October 9, we don't have a full city council for the balance of October. November 6, you have hillside development standards and a discussion of planning commission recommendations and direction of staff on single-family homes that I think will take some time. So November 13 is, is really the first light enough agenda for which we expect a full city council.
We don't have a full city council next week?
We do, we do on the 9th. You, on the 9th, you review the, yeah, you, we do on the 9th. Yeah, you've got a number of items on the agenda, though. The 9th, you have a discussion at 6:00 on the use of tax increment for redevelopment, for development of parks and libraries, and the discussion of, while we're holding over the discussion setbacks on East Glen Oaks, be the recommendation, proposed improvements at Maple Park. So it'd really be the amount of time it takes for the conversation of the use of tax increment funds for parks and libraries, which could take some time.
Ma'am, would you please state your name and?
My name is Nancy Campbell. I am the appellant.
And how do you feel about going forward today with four of us?
I would like to do it tonight. I don't want to continue it.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it's up to you, of course.
Yes, but we certainly want to hear what you're concerned about.
Thank you.
Thank you. And sir?
My name is Robert Gavorkian. I'm the applicant, and.
Yes. How do you feel about going forward?
I would like to go forward because I, we already might as well continue because I have people here that are going to be supporting me, and I just don't know how many times I can get them afford to be present.
So you'd like to go forward also? Okay, thank you. You can return to your seats, and now we get to take that into account and decide what we'd like to do. Councilmen, what would you like to do? Well, Mr. Draymond.
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Mayor, you, I assume, have cards related to this topic. Do we have any idea how lengthy an item this is going to be based on the fact that we're going to lose you at 8:00?
Currently, I have five cards.
Six cards?
Seven cards.
Seven cards.
If anyone's interested in speaking, please come forward, because this is going to weigh on our decision as to what we're going to do.
Eight cards.
Come forth, come forth.
How much time do the, do these speakers have in this kind of situation?
It would be my intention to give them three minutes.
Although you'd probably want to give more to the applicant and the appellant, yeah.
Which is what?
More time to the appellant.
He's looking for 10.
Thank you.
10, 20.
We're looking at perhaps an hour.
About an hour.
An hour of public hearing.
Not counting staff time.
Not counting staff time or.
Our deliberation.
Or council bloviating time, so.
But you ought to get the Febreeze out.
I don't think you're going to get out of here.
That's my concern. I know everyone is here for this, and, and both the applicant and the appellant are indicating they'd like to go forward. I just want to make sure that everyone understands we'll be going forward probably through a good portion of this with only three council members, and because we will lose you at 8:00. So there's going to be an hour just in, that's if we start right now, if you move it up to right now.
Maybe you should have asked one more question. Would they go forward with only three each?
Yeah. Or there is, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of council, there is the option of opening the public hearing, taking the testimony now. If the mayor does leave and misses some of the testimony, the mayor could review the meeting, note for the, the matter could be continued over to the date where you would essentially engage in debate and a decision at another date.
And that could be with five of us.
That could be with all five of you, as long as Mr. Yusefian notes for the record that he has reviewed the full transcript of the proceedings or the whole tape of the meeting.
I will say, I don't prefer that, but I'd be willing to do that.
That is just an option. I'm not suggesting that occur.
And the reason why, by the way, is because, is because part of this for me is to be able to ask questions of people who are speaking. But I will certainly, I could go along with that. It would not be my first choice.
We've never done anything in a very short manner yet.
Yeah.
So it will go long.
And certainly, you would not be foreclosed from carrying on with the public hearing as long as necessary.
Clarify carrying on, please, Mr. Mayor.
We'll compete it and close it, and then postpone.
Save the, save the ultimate vote at such time as our five.
If the public hearing isn't closed when you leave, we'll close it eventually.
And that would be really the decision of the council members who remain, is when this matter gets continued for further debate and decision. Again, assuming that the, that if you're gone, Mr. Mayor, assuming that Mr. Yusefian, when he returns, has reviewed the tape of the meeting and all the necessary materials to represent for the record that he has, so that he can actually engage in making the decision.
I would actually, if we take that course, and it's not my first choice either, I would prefer we continue it to a date certain next Tuesday. We have that one item that, while that's certainly going to be important, but this to me is just as important, so.
And without the lengthy public hearing, if it's just the council's deliberation decision, it probably works fine next Tuesday.
Okay. Well, do we need an official vote on that, or is that something that?
You should actually, if you can reach consensus, essentially through just a, not a roll call vote, but if you reach consensus where you're of unanimous consent to agree to something, you should state it for the record, so that is on the record, that you're going to proceed with the public hearing. Or that the matter is going to be in its entirety continued to a date certain without further public notice.
So is there any objection to the procedure in which we will open the public hearing? We'll go as long as we can until I have to leave.
And we'll continue the public hearing without you, close it, and then move it to a date certain for discussion.
Discussion amongst council and the ultimate vote on that. Are we okay with that?
Well, again, that's not my first choice. I don't like breaking up the, the public hearing into two pieces potentially, and then some of the council is here for that, some of the council is not here for that, and some of the council is precluded from interacting with the public on that. As I say, I will agree to that, but it's not my first choice, Mr. Mayor.
What would be your first choice?
It would be to continue the matter to a date certain.
Whole thing.
Yes. I, I know that it's inconvenient, but I also think it's in the best interest of the public, and, and both the appellant and the applicant, to have the full hearing, discussion, question, and council deliberation in one, in one shot. That's just how I feel about it.
I gather whether we, if we postpone or don't postpone, it's still going to be two meetings. Because if we go through the public hearing, close it, come back next week, then some are going to be back again to at least list them to it, so there's no getting away.
Right. So why not, rather than, than split it up and do it over two meetings, since we're going to be coming back anyway, why not do it in one shot, so the public has a chance to see the progression of this all the way through rather than piecemeal, and afford our colleague who's missing, and frankly, possibly you, Mr. Mayor, the opportunity to have direct.
Why don't you ask them what they think?
Why don't I bring, ask the, Mr. Gavorkian and the, I'm sorry, Ms. Campbell, would you come forward and tell us what you think about that? And my only, my only point is that. You do have people who are here, they may not be able to come back the second time. However, on the other hand, there is some benefit to a one fluid hearing where questions remain fresh and issues remain fresh in our minds as well as yours.
I understand what you're saying, but I have a question. When this particular night was set for this, wasn't it assumed that everybody would be here? How do we know for sure then in the future at another date we set that there will be all five? I'm sure you figured there would be all five here tonight when you set this for this.
Yusefian's on airport business, and I don't know how much we knew here.
I mean, if at the time this date was set, I had known it wasn't going to be a full council, I probably would have said something then, but do you always know ahead of time? I mean, you can't always know, it's life.
Mr. Mayor, I would respond. Planning staff generally picks a date for a public hearing, city clerk does advertising, issues arise, meantime, we presume we have a city, a full city council, but in this case, Ms. Yusefian had to go to a meeting outside of the city, and Ms. Najarian had an issue come up we weren't aware of back when the date was set.
I understand that. But that could happen next week, too.
It could. Well, we do, we are working hard to try and, and get a sense when council members can plan weeks. For example, we, we know Ms. Yusefian is informed, so he'd like to be on vacation for the three last meetings in October. Mr. Quintero's given us a heads up, he likely won't be here on the 30th of October. So as best we can, we try and anticipate, but things arise sometimes that we just can't anticipate.
And I'm on, I'm going to be on a business trip on the meeting that you set for November.
Well, that's certainly important for us.
So this is not helping any, is it?
It's pushing us to the 9th.
That's why my feeling is next week, the 9th is, no, no, the 9th of October, next week would be.
What do you think?
Mr. Gavorkian, what do you think?
My opinion, either way, it's going to be broken up to two, then we might as well do it today and then continue it on the 9th. If, if we, because as some of you guys suggested, it's still not, I might not have enough time because there's another important subject that you guys have to cover before this, and that might keep it away from having a full, full public hearing.
I think his point is that we, if we do the entire meeting on the, the hearing on the 9th, we do have some, the tax increment issue that, just in terms of the hours available for the hearing.
Mr. Starburg.
Although it's your discretion, as you did this evening, you can make this public hearing first, and.
Yeah, make it first.
At that point, the discussion of tax increment can be second if there's time. If there's time, if there's not, it ends up getting bumped.
Because there could be more people here for that than there are going to be for the tax increment. We can spend midnight.
Why don't we just have a show of hands or a nod for, for those that would like to commence the public hearing at this point, go as far as we can, not take any vote on it until the 9th, and should the, should the public hearing not conclude, then what remains would be continued to the 9th as well.
I'd go for that.
That would be my preference.
To split it.
Just to start it now, go as far as we can, and then hopefully conclude with the deliberation and the vote on the 9th.
I don't care. That's two.
Okay.
I abstain. I don't, I really don't care. It's what my colleagues think. There's, there's pros and cons to both ways.
I know. And, and the other proposal is to continue this to the 9th?
To the 9th, next week.
We're going to end up back here on the 9th anyway.
That's, that's the problem. If, if only two items are under the tax increment and this, we could say that we want this on first item next week. We could spend two or three hours on it if we need to, and handle the tax increment, get the people out of here.
Well, but on the other hand, the tax increment to finance parks is very important. I think we will have a big turnout.
You think so?
So I don't want to discourage those people from.
I didn't know.
From showing up either.
What I, what I don't want to happen is I don't want to lose anyone who came here tonight to speak and who would otherwise not be able to speak if we were to continue it for next week. I don't think that would be fair for anyone that's here, so.
Ask that question, ask, show hands. Is there anybody that can't come back next week?
This is, what I'm going to do is I'm going to, I am, am going to open the public hearing and give everyone their chance to speak. We'll go until approximately 8:00. Hopefully, we'll conclude with the speakers. o'clock. Hopefully, we'll conclude with the speakers. If not, we'll continue it until the ninth, at which point I will give the, I will give a short period of time for Ms. Campbell and Mr. Givorkian to give a summary of their position, just to refresh council as to their, their views on it and their closing argument, if you will. And then council will deliberate.
Okay.
So that's what we're going to do. And before we spend the whole evening discussing it, this was read into the record. And I would like to give.
Staff report first.
Let's start with a staff report. Like to open the public hearing. Mr. Hagani.
And I'm going to ask Chris Baxter, the case planner for this project, to give his slight presentation of the case.
Mr. Member, Mr. Mayor, members of council, what I'd like to do is first, just make sure everybody has a staff report. And did you get a copy of the PowerPoint presentation? All right. I'm going to go very quickly in the staff report. I'm going to just make a quick review of a summary section, kind of give some highlights of the staff report because it was rather long. And then I'm going to move straight into the PowerPoint. So it'll be very brief, so give people time to talk. In the staff report, the, under the summary section, the reason we're here tonight is because the Alternatives Assessment Panel in July approved a design review board, a project to demolish an existing one-story house with a detached garage and construct a new two-story house of a Spanish design. The project site has several large oak trees on it. The applicant then appealed it to the city council. Prior to that, the application was reviewed three times by the Design Review Board. The first time it was returned for redesign because the board members didn't feel it met the intent of the design guidelines. And then the other two times, the board felt that the applicant did meet that intent and they eventually approved it on the third time. On our third page of the staff report, the requested action, of course, by the appellant is to overturn that approval because they don't feel that the project is consistent with the neighborhood character, the city codes or the design guidelines. The project is in an R1R zone, but it's the hills, it's not a hillside zone that we normally see with very steep lots. It's actually a relatively gentle sloping hillside lot. It's about a 20-foot change of grade from the street to the back of the lot. It's not that large. We have a whole history here in the staff report. It's also on our PowerPoint. So I'll zip through that. And then there are arguments further into the staff report. Three board members were present on the Alternatives Assessment Panel. Three of the five of the three, two voted for the approval, one voted against. Mr. Carnehan was one of the board members. He voted against it. He's just, basically in a summary, he did not feel that the proposed project fit with the existing neighborhood pattern or the rhythm of the neighborhood. Board member James, who I see is present tonight, felt the opposite. He felt that the proposed house did not oppose on the neighborhood. And he has some well-thought points in the staff report that I noted here. Finally, Mr. Seenfreen concurred with board member James and he felt that the project complied with the guidelines and the code. Then Ms. Campbell, the appellant, obviously agreed more with Mr. Carnehan, and that is why she appealed. That information is further delineated in your staff report. So if we'll jump real quick here to the PowerPoint presentation, I'll try to give you a quick little tour of the site. On the. Very good. Thank you very much. The applicant's request, as I noted, is for just about a 3,900 square foot house. There'll be a three-car garage. It's two stories and the architectural style is Spanish design. In the project history, we'll see that that single-family house that's existing right now was first built around 1921. It was a garage built in '38. In 1998, there was some remodeling. Then the, sorry. Then in January 2006, the applicant submitted a design review submittal. And during that review, staff noted that there was a code violation, which led to the applicant submitting a variance because he was proposing a three-story house by code. We eventually had the, the applicant eventually withdrew the project because we talked to him about trying to comply with code. Then he submitted his conditional use permit because when you demolish a house in Glendale, even though there was an existing house on a pad on the site, it's considered new construction and under the R1R zone requirements, you have to submit a design, a conditional use permit. And that was approved in August of 2006. The original DRB project was revised and then it was reviewed again by the Design Review Board, or I should say, for the first time by the Design Review Board. And in a vote of five to zero, they returned it for redesign. In March, the applicant resubmitted the proposal and they reduced the size of the house. If you'll note here, the house was about almost 4,500 square feet and now it is about 3,900. So they reduced the house about 500 square feet in response to the board issues and concerns that they stated in the previous review. The, the board continued the case for two weeks. On a four to zero vote, one of the board members is no longer a member of the board. And then the, and two weeks later, three of the four board members were present and you had a two, four, one against vote and one was absent. Then we had our first appeal to the Alternatives Assessment Panel by the neighbor, Ms. Campbell. At that time, as I mentioned, the Alternatives Assessment Panel approved the project. And then again, we have another appeal by the neighbor, Ms. Campbell, to the city council. Very quickly, look at our location map. You can see the project site right here. Here's Walbossa Way. This is Hillside Drive here, Sierra Place. So it's right here at this intersection, this corner right here. Now, this is a little bit busy, but what I want to do is I want you to, I want to point out three areas that I think are of interest because they were always coming up to the board. We'll look at average, neighborhood average, and we'll look at project. So the number of stories, if you go back to that page and you count up the number of stories out of the 20 homes surveyed, about 50% are two-story. The project is two-story. The setback from the street, that's from the street property line to the forwardmost portion of the house, would be a covered porch or patio. In this case, the average of the neighborhood is 28 feet versus 69 feet to the covered patio that projects forward on this house. And that's approximately 69 feet from, it wasn't specifically stated on the plans. And the floor area ratio, you can see for the average is 16% versus 31% for the neighborhood. Now, this topography map shows some existing improvements to give you a feel. It's not the best, I'm afraid, but hopefully your, your, your staff report shows a little better. But you can see, here's my cursor, this is where the existing house is right now. We have a garage right here and we have some concrete pad areas, walkways, and a driveway like this in this area and actually up to here. The new house, if you'll note, you'll see this topography change. This is a pad uphill and this is a flatter area downhill and then you have this grade change right here. So if you'll note in the new house, when I go to the next slide, you'll see here is that same area. Instead of the house being back here, what you have is now you have the house which is straddling it. So a portion of the house right here like this is now covering this area here. Now, the neighbor's house in relationship to this is right here. This is the neighbor's house and this is where Ms. Campbell lives. And this is why in her written communications and verbal communications, this is her concerns right here. The other neighbor's house is outside the 20-foot area, but it's right over in this area here. This is just some quick views of the garage, which has been sort of noted by neighbors as giving the appearance of a three-story feels because you have this garage that's below the other two stories. But by code, it technically complies with the zoning code. So you have your three-car garage down there. And then our first, second, and roof plans. Let me just back up for a second. On the second floor, one of the issues, this used to be fully covered when the applicant wanted to come and, he was going to apply for a variance for the third story because if you had the garage and the basement, then you had the living area on the first floor. And if this was a covered enclosed area, this would create your third floor. Well, that's now gone and it is just, it's vacant. So technically, at no point where my cursor's going is there are more than two stories stacked on top of each other. That's the intent of how the applicant designed the project, to comply with code. Then this is an elevation of the house, colored elevation. This would be our street view as seen from the, of course, from the street. This would be the neighbor seen from the north side of the property. This is the view that's seen from Ms. Campbell. Her house is going to be sitting somewhere right here. Her house pad is about 940 and I believe this is around 945. It's about five, five and a half feet higher at this point here. But we'll see some photographs that show it. And then, of course, here's the rear view. There's some section views. This, again, some of the, the reasons some of the neighbors are calling it a three-story house, but technically it complies with the zoning code. Again, another section view. The reason we put in this slide showing the front gate, currently there is a fence in the front. If you've been by the property, you can see that. And here is the applicant. It's going to be a new improved gate. This is the driveway gate. Here's a fence. It is setback out of the front setback area. And that's a proposal there. We have our landscape plan which shows how they're going to be landscaping the property. You can see here, this shows you how they moved the house forward. If you recall in the topography map, the house was located back here and they pulled it forward about 20 to 30 feet to this point right here. Then very briefly, just give you a quick sort of drive-through. We have our neighborhood photos that give an overview. You'll see some of the one-stories and two-stories that were brought up from both by the applicant and the appellant. You can see here, you can see a variety, sort of an eclectic neighborhood in terms of architectural styles. And then we want to look at the site. Some of the arguments made by the applicant is that the, you can't really see the house for the trees. And so this is, you're standing here at the curb, right here, looking back, and that's the existing house. And here's the foliage here. Ms. Campbell's house would be right over here and we'll get to that in a second here. This is right over the top of the wall and looking straight back at the house that we saw before. This is the garage. You can see here's the driveway and a drive into the garage here. Our front gate looks, so that's what you look at when you look over on that side of the property. This is a view from Ms. Campbell's front yard. You can't see it well here, but this is the neighbor's front yard right here, but you can see back up in here is where the improvements are going to be. Again, another view, a little closer, trying to see. Unfortunately, it's not that clear as I had hoped, but you, there's some story pole action here and we'll see that. This is a property to the north, looking into the property. So this is on the other side from where Ms. Campbell lives. She lives on the other side. And here's our story poles. Now, we haven't really used story poles much in Glendale, so this is kind of a first, certainly a first that I have worked with. And you can see the red dots indicate where the poles go. And these go to, if I'm not mistaken, I believe they just go to the plate line, but we did ask the applicant to place one at the highest ridge point. So, but the rest of these are at the plate line of the house. So they, they're not all the way to the top of the ridge. And then here are the story poles. So this should also be in your staff report so you can kind of feel how, remember, here's that topo break that I was talking about and the house is coming forward to kind of straddle that. And as we come down, you can still see here, we have our story poles here, the house in the back. And another view, this is actually looking, standing on the north, looking to the south in the front yard area. This is standing in the neighbor's property to the north and you can see where the circle is, where that will be an actual volume of house through here. Now, this is Ms. Campbell's house. You can see a portion of the story pole here up underneath the trees, the side of the garage. Again, another kind of expanded view, the oak trees, the canopy in the area, which is, you can see it's very lush and where the, and here's part of that existing house. You can see where the neighbors were making the argument, the project will be hard to see. Now, this is standing inside Ms. Campbell's house, looking at a story pole outside her window. This may be her kitchen window, but it's inside her house. And you can see these. Again, her front yard, story poles within that circle, again, within her front yard. Her backyard, this is standing off by her driveway, looking over here, you can see story poles above the ridge of her existing house right here. The existing house under discussion is right back here at the back of the lot. Some more story poles and that is the existing house back there. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer questions if you have any.
Mr. Quintero.
When you talk about 50% of the homes in the neighborhood being two stories, I drove that neighborhood extensively and even looking at these pictures, I find that very difficult to understand. Do you consider when there is a natural, that line, when it's a natural, when it's a natural slope and you have a split level, and you have a split level home, in other words, I noticed some of the, there might have been a garage here and then basically a single-story home above it. Do you consider that as two-story home? Is that the way it works?
Yes, sir. For instance, in the photographs that we had up there, that would be, that would be two stories.
Right. So even though there's a natural slope, a garage is placed at the bottom, single-story above that, that's still, that's where you're getting the 50% then?
Well, actually, what I'm getting from is the survey that was presented was submitted by the applicant. Now, looking at the photographs, I can see where he's, that's consistent. So it's the, by code, if you're, if you have living space that's more than three feet above the, the average top of curb at the street there, then that's a story. So anything uphill is a story, the way we look at it. Even though it's a garage, it would still be considered a story.
Okay. Any other questions of staff?
I have one.
Mr. Draymond and Mr. Starburn.
A real simple question. There's a, as part of the report, there's the, the basic map, 500-foot radius emanating out from, not 500 feet from the center of the project property, but from the corners of the property. So that everybody understands here, can you explain, please, why 500 feet and what the 500 feet is meant to represent?
Yes. The 500 feet was for, not for notification purposes. Under the code, it's 300 feet. 500 feet was, in fact, I'm not sure, I remember Mr. Howard talking about it a long time ago, was related to conflict of interest, to let people know, for instance, if a board member was looking at this project and he had some other project within 500 feet of this property, then he would at least know whether there's going to be a conflict.
So it's essentially the conflict map?
Yes, sir.
So that's, so you're saying that's the conflict map?
Yes, sir. That's what that's about.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Starburn?
Well, I guess I was a little confused when the houses are referenced as two stories with the garage tucked underneath. How is it this house is not three stories? And you said technically it's not three stories. How is it not three stories?
Absolutely. That's a, that's a fair question. When I look in my, okay, for instance, we could pick a page, let's say number 14 in your PowerPoint. So if you look there, you have a, a garage above the street and then you have the living area above that, directly above that. So that would be one volume and directly above you move into another volume. Now, when you go to, if we could, if we could raise this, the screen, please. And I have placed over here on the right side a perspective. I, oh, I'm sorry, on the left side. Mr. Hagani? Right there in the middle on the right, that perspective right there? Okay. When you see the garage, the two garage doors, that's one floor. Then right above it is another floor. And then above that is an empty space. Now, what eventually, what originally happened when the variance came in is that volume was enclosed, just like we would have seen here on page 13 or 14, whatever I was referring to. And that would have been a three-story. So the applicant is very well aware of how this process works. Most of the applicants are who do a lot of work in the city. They understand that at any one point, that you're not going to have three levels stacked on top of each other. So theoretically, you could stair-step your way up. So theoretically, you could stair-step your way up a hill and have two-story, 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 but when you stand at the bottom, and you look up the hill, it looks like three stories.
Okay, I see.
So that's how that works. It's a technicality, but that's the reality of how it works.
In the same way, one of those houses you showed on Wabaso Way, if there had not been living space above the garage, the garage would have only been one story.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, all right.
Now, again, the applicant submitted that information on that very busy chart that I showed you. That was his, that's what he showed us, and, but I didn't see an inconsistency. Did I go out and double-check every single house, knock on doors, and say, can I walk through here and make sure this is a two-story, not three-story, and one-story? No, I did not. You can drive through the neighborhood. I've been through there several times, three or four, if not five, times. And you got a general feel that it is pretty much two-story. And those.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other questions of staff, I'm going to invite the applicant, excuse me, the appellant up, Ms. Campbell. And we'll, 10 minutes?
May I, please?
Yes, you certainly can have 10 minutes.
If I collapse before that, then you can just cut me down.
We'll revive you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, you guys know where to go for that, don't you? We were talking about that a minute ago. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, Mr. Draymond, Mr. Quintero, Mr. Weaver, City Clerk, Director of Planning, City Attorney, Chief Assistant City Attorney, City Manager and Assistant City Manager. I'm Nancy Campbell, and I live at 2021 Sierra Place in the Verdugo Woodlands area of the City of Glendale. I'm here tonight to present my objection to the Alternative Assessment Panel's July 12th decision to approve the proposed project at 2023 Sierra Place, which is located next door to the north side of my home. First of all, I want to thank you very much for your consideration about letting us present tonight. It's great that you did that. Thank you so much. And I thank you all for placing us ahead of the other people. And I'm, thank you for thinking of our concerns, and we're not going to all speak, but I would like to have people stand, please, that are seeing my viewpoint on this, with my, my friends and neighbors and.
We took it first.
Whatever, thank you very much. Thank you for coming out. I'm glad we could make use of tonight for everybody. I appreciate that. I hope you've all been to my home and looked for my backyard at the story poles. And I thank you so much for that presentation, because that did a much better job than my photographs will, and you could see the story poles very clearly. But if you were there seeing them in person, you'd truly understand how incompatible, massive and intrusive this structure will be for the immediate neighborhood and for me personally. If it's built as currently proposed, I will lose all the natural light and open airspace on the northern side of my home because of a 35-foot-high wall. My privacy and that of my neighbors will be infringed upon because of that same looming stucco wall with windows overlooking my entire rear patio area. It will be very intrusive. Putting in more trees, a fix recommended by the DRB, will not disguise, disguise this extremely tall and wide new building mass. In a moment, I'll show you the photos of the homes on my street, and you can see exactly what my street looks like compared to what this looks like. And when you do look at the story poles again, and think of the ones that you just saw, please visualize the space between those poles, which are so innocent-looking, as solid walls. It's hard to visualize. Not everybody can do that. This project is a perfect example of the mansionization that has become so rampant in lovely neighborhoods like ours. It doesn't adhere to the Design Review Code and the Neighborhood Guidelines of the City of Glendale. The Design Review Board and the Alternative Assessment Panel have a mandate to uphold these laws, and they have failed to do so. A majority of the three Alternative Assessment Panel members failed to apply the city's Municipal Code Sections 304710 and 304740, and the city's residential design guidelines, and the city's single-family neighborhood guidelines, and the hillside guidelines in making a determination on this project. The guidelines state, "All new development in the city's exclusive residential neighborhood should accomplish the following: preserve the existing character of the surrounding area; exhibit a creative and compatible design scheme that contributes to the existing built form of the existing neighborhood." The design guidelines also state, "To minimize the bulky appearance of new buildings, the height of new homes should relate to lot width. It's recommended that the narrower the lot, the lower the building." And that's right in the design guidelines. You can look at that, look that up. This lot is 72 feet wide, at 15 feet back from the street, which is the place that this is determined. The guidelines suggested, in case of the relatively small lots, the building height should be 40% of the width of the lot at that point, or 25 feet, whichever's the lowest. The new building is planned for 35-feet height. This project, at 3,897 square feet, is 114% larger than the average 1,819-square-foot residence within 300 feet of the site, and the lot is only 19% larger than those homes. The setback is 77 feet, and the average of the neighbors is 28 feet. The project is simply planned for the wrong lot, and in the wrong neighborhood. It should be built on a wide flatland lot next to other houses with similar mass and scale, not on a narrow, sloping hillside lot. If it is to be built here, it needs to be scaled down from 3,897 square feet, lowered to below the maximum 35-foot height allowed, moved forward on the lot so its setback is more uniform with the neighboring homes. Just because there are maximum allowances in height, square footage, and setback, doesn't mean building to the maximum is the right thing to do. It should be redesigned. Past staff comments have included that the design is not sensitive to the Woodlands We should, they should reduce the building massing and soften the architectural details. The house appears too tall. Increase the size of the rear and side setbacks. Some of my side comments are that the DRB states that the trend everywhere is for larger homes, and it was inferred that I should just get used to it. Does Glendale have to continue building bigger and bigger mansions? Why? Property rights are for everyone, the new owners who want to build their homes, and the existing owners who want to retain their investment in the way of life that they have chosen. There are reasons why our area has attracted so many wonderful people. It's a beautiful place. I must mention that my appeal experience with the Alternative Assessment Panel on July 12th was not what I expected. I understood that there would be five members made up from the combined boards. Only three showed up. One from DRB 1, who hadn't seen the case, and two from DRB 2, who had already made up their minds from their previous review. There was no architect on the panel. It's a well-known fact that new projects should be shown in context with their surrounding structures. Not everyone can visualize the reality of what paper plans indicate. The owner was directed by the DRB to submit a drawing of the project in context with all the neighbors. This was never done. The only concession was to show my garage and the proposed project. Given that my garage is on the opposite side of my property, it's not relevant. They never showed my 19-foot-tall, peaked-roof, single-story home right next to their 35-foot-high building. I literally have to crane my neck to look up at the top of the story pole next to my house. In conclusion, this design does not fit the character of the Verdugo Woodlands. Consider its massive size for the unfortunate lot, that's in quotes, as one DRB member stated when referring to the parcel's configuration, and consider the lack of compatibility with our homes when you make your decision. I'd like to show my slideshow if I could, and I'll just let it go brief. I don't think I'll even stop. We'll just show it. Because you did a good job with the story pole showing, and your pictures were better than mine. Just in case I want to stop, can I have the mouse through? Thank you. Thank you so much. Let's see, where's my mouse? There we go. That's, this is, this is Sierra Place. I'll let you do it. Sierra Place in Hillside, yeah. I'll let, maybe you should start it. Gets a better view. Thank you. And these are the houses, right straight down the street.
Hello? Yes.
That's the side of my house. The front of my house, and part of their front. That's, you can see back in through there, but you saw a better picture than that before. It's their front. This is right across the street on Hills, on Wabaso, across from it, and that's also in the same area, right next to it. This is their house with those new houses up on Teddy Bear Hill after that. This house is right across the street on Sierra, and so is that. Those are on the corners of Wabaso, and this one's on the corner of Hillside. This is my backyard. There's one of the story poles, which he mentioned before. Story, you can't see the flags. They go all across the top, through the middle. You see the poles there. This is from my front yard. Front yard. Remember, visualize solid walls. Here's my overlay of what the building would look like in my backyard. From my front yard again. I want to be ready here. This is from the side of my house, looking up. Now, you can't even see the top of the pole from there. This is from my backyard again. This is from the neighbors on the other side, looking through it. Okay. I wanted to stop it there. Darn. Well, I tried, and it didn't work. That view, those last two pictures were the, were the story poles and the flags from Teddy Bear Hill, looking down into the property. Please deny this obtrusive and inappropriate proposed project. And let's get something that we can all live with. I'm not against their building. I'm just against this one. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I will now invite the applicant, Mr. Givorkian, or your representative. And I will give you 10 minutes, and your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Vartan Jangosian, 1101 East Broadway, Suite 106, Glendale, California. I'm the designer of this project. I want to just make a couple comments. Ms. Campbell, present her side of the story. And unfortunately, I want to start from one point. After first Design Review Board submittal, we make it a lot of compromises only one way. And I believe the project which we did, she is the only one who is benefiting from this project, because existing house, which is we have right now on the lot, is only two feet away from her house, and a garage, too. Right now, we're pushing the new house about average 13 feet away from property line. And plus, we're creating 900 cubic-yard grading work, just because we want to lower the path and make it more convenient, give more light to Ms. Campbell. And we did all these compromises, and unfortunately, in Glendale's story, never was a story pole we provide that to. I mean, I'm just surprised, you know, how many times we can make compromises, and how many times we can, we can, we can just, you know, work with her without getting any, 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 I mean, good things from them, too. And instead of that last Design Board hearing, we heard a lot of very nasty words about the project. And unfortunately, one of the supporters, Ms. Campbell, compared the project with the pornography. I don't know if that person is here, that we're trying to be nice neighbors. And regarding about the project, I want to tell one thing. The project is, is meeting all the city zoning and the guidelines. I mean, whatever she thought right now is not true. I mean, we follow up everything, whatever was in the zoning and the building code, and in the guideline to hillside ordinance, too. We're trying just to, to make a nice project, which is going to benefit everybody. And the next thing which I like to discuss, Ms. Campbell was showing only the pictures, which is one story, and picture was taken very, you know, from short distance. Whatever was a two-story, three-story, the picture was taken like 300 yards away, and trying to make, you know, some kind of illusion here. It's showing all the houses in that area. It's the small houses, and only this project is a huge house over there. But she never showed the project right next door is a three-story, big 6,000-square-foot house. Or other side of the Wabaso Street, there is too many two, three-story homes. It's not far even 100 yards, 100 feet. So let's, let's be honest, when we are coming here, let's bring the very reasonable concern, or just, if we are trying to, you know, tell the project is not good, give us the good reason. We never heard that. And all the time, even during the Design Review Board, we hear only, only stories which doesn't, doesn't exist even in that area. And we very closely work with them for the project character, too. Very beginning was a Mediterranean style. We changed to Spanish style, and we break the building part, just to, you know, work with this hillside ordinance, and make a building two-story. And any other, there is another point, which, if you've been on the job site, this house is not going to be never, never shown from the street, because the project is covered all around. These are oak trees and huge trees. And there was another comment, why we are not pushing the house forward to the, over to the street. All the time, we are talking about the green. We are talking, preserve the, you know, nature and the trees. If we're going to move the house even five feet, we're going to start touching all the existing nice, beautiful trees. We're trying to preserve all the nature, all the trees, and we're trying to use the existing path. Again, we, we did create 900 cubic-yard grading work, because we want to please her. We want to lower the house and make more air and make more light for her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a question?
I don't think so. Thank you. And I'm going to go to the speakers at three minutes each. The first speaker is Mark Baer.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. Having, having trees to block a view.
It's your name, Mr. Baer.
Mark Baer, I'm sorry. Having trees justifying this project because they're, the view can be blocked by trees isn't really a good justification. I bought a home that was next to a property that's, looks like an apartment building. And I bought it because there were big trees planted in the backyard, but unfortunately, they have a canker virus, and they're all going to be dying. So I'm going to be getting a wonderful view from my one-story house of something that's approximately three stories tall, that was allowed to be built before the Design Review Board came into place. Now, the fact of the matter is, as far as I'm concerned, when people are moving into a neighborhood, they should be moving into a neighborhood and buying a property, because either, or both, they like the home, or they like the neighborhood. If you're buying a property, and you're going to tear that structure down, and you're going to put something that is inconsistent with the neighborhood, and I'm not referring to all of Glendale, I'm referring to this particular neighborhood in Glendale, and you're going to put something that's inconsistent, then obviously you didn't like the neighborhood, because the house doesn't fit it, and obviously you didn't like the home. So I don't quite understand why the property was bought in the first place. But the argument as far as homeowners' rights are concerned, it should apply to people who bought their properties already. We bought our homes in the neighborhood, because we happen to like the character of the neighborhood. And when the Design Review Board sits and says, well, they bought the property, we believe that people should have. believe that people should have their property rights," well, guess what? We all know what happened last week with Mr. Yefsepean. I suspect that if I bought a property next to any of you, and tried to do what the applicant is trying to do here, that none of you would allow this thing to go forth. So, the people in the Design Review Board that are in favor of homeowners' rights, it's because this house isn't being built next to their properties. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Baer. Next speaker is Lisa DeMertien.
Good evening. My name is Lisa DeMertien. By listening to what this previous gentleman said, it was, he's very rude, because a person, whenever they buy a property, in the beginning, they're buying the property to do whatever they want to do to it, inconsistent to the rights of the home owning and zoning guidelines. But he's implementing that, he, Mr. Givorkian brought the property just to basically build a three-story mansion, but which he's not going to be doing. Everything that he's doing is within the guidelines, and the Review Board twice approved And basically, everything that I heard, both of the sides, Ms. Campbell is... Excuse me. Sorry.
Thank you. And I'd just like to remind people, address the issues, and we don't need to describe anyone as being rude, or, or any other disparaging remarks. There's enough, there's enough to discuss on the merits of this to last us a long time.
Hello, Mayor, Councilmen, and Staff. My name is Esther Moran. I live next door to Nancy Campbell, just so, two houses south, or one house south of the proposed building site. I also currently live at 1521 Wabaso, so I'm also just east of the proposed building site. I live in one of the houses that was described here as a two-story, which it's not, it just has the garage underneath, but no extra rooms like the proposed building has. I'm here to speak for myself and my husband about our concerns. I've spoken twice before the DRB. I was out of the country for the appeal, so I was not able to speak then. The proposed building, in spite of the changes, is still palatial in size, and it's simply too massive for the narrow lot in question. We're a neighborhood of quaint and modest houses, not mansions. And it's true that there is one pre-DRB mistake on the corner that the designer mentioned, that is a pre-DRB building at 1440 Wabaso. And there have, there are a few buildings that have eked in, even since the inception of the DRB, specifically the ones up on Teddy Bear Hill, which we saw in one of Mr. The neighborhood guidelines published by the City of Glendale Planning Division states that, and I quote, "Mansionization refers to the construction or remodeling of single-family homes to the maximum allowable size permitted by land use and zoning regulation in neighborhoods distinctly characterized by considerably smaller homes." It also states that mansionization, quote, "has displaced the importance of conforming to and enhancing a neighborhood's existing character. The proposed building is a textbook example of mansionization, and pushes the boundaries of the lot and the neighborhood." This building would dwarf the neighborhood homes, including our own. Visually, there'd be little escape from it in my yard. As I said, it's just one house over to the south. Due to recent construction up on Teddy Bear Hill, we already have to look out our window at these gigantic boxes that have been built up there. We sincerely hope that we will not have this added intrusion into our backyard. I don't want you to think that we're against all construction in the neighborhood at all. We are not. As a matter of fact, the reason I'm living on Wabaso right now is because we are currently adding a second story to our own home. In doing so, from the very beginning, when we interviewed architects, and we interviewed architects, by the way, not designers, we found an architect who would be true to the character of the neighborhood and the period of our own house, which is a Spanish Revival. Once we had the designs made, we had the neighbors over to review the plans with us. We got the support of the Neighborhood Association, and we had many people speak in our favor, nobody against us, when we went in front of the DRB. Was that beef for me?
That is for you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a card from Robert Givorkian. You're entitled to three minutes.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I allowed my architect to go first, because for the 10 minutes, knowing more about the regulations and the design that he made, he would have been able to answer more questions.
And for the record, your name is?
Sorry, Robert Givorkian. I am a realtor myself, and just to put conclusive kind of a point to the ridiculous hearing that we're having here today, is not, is, there's nothing that the appellants have represented that makes sense, besides putting their emotions up front. Everything that's been made to guidelines has been reviewed many times by two boards, and it's been approved by two boards. I don't appreciate them criticizing the board members that were present at that time. Second of all, I'm holding in my hands, this is the third board, I'm, two boards, I represented this sheet, and also I'm going to represent it to you guys. There is multiple houses here. This is just the ones that have been sold within a year, which 1566 Hillside Drive is a 3,000 square feet house, sitting on an 8,300 square foot lot. There's 1810 Sunshine Court, 7,000 square feet lot, 2,000 square feet house. There's 3,700 square feet house sitting on a 1,400 square foot lot on Nodrara Drive, 1819 Nodrara Drive, which, all these houses are within, under half a mile, half a mile away from the property. And this doesn't include the houses that still exist. One of the houses belongs to a person who's here to oppose the project, who is, I don't know her full name, but her name is Myrna, and she, she has, she's living in a three-story house in our neighborhood, she's the president of the association. Also, we had a lot of neighbors opposing, after second meeting, two, two of our neighbors approached me, said, "This is just becoming a ridiculous event, and we're just not going to show up. If you want, we can come and support you." One of the neighbors that said, approached me, was the neighbor living right above my house, that I'm going to be building, which, if anybody's supposed to be opposing to the project, it's him, because it's going to block him. Also...
If you can wrap up.
Yeah. The last thing I wanted to say is, when you saw the pictures of the houses in the neighborhood, all of them were on a setback, none of them were in front of the street. That's why we're trying to keep the same style in the neighborhood. And while, at the end of the meeting, the last thing, at the end of the meeting, when the board was adjourned, and there was a decision made, president of association approached Nancy Campbell when I was there, and I kind of heard the conversation, because I was right there next to them. And she was giving points how to present the project, and how to appel the decision. So this is just being ridiculous.
Thank you. Tom Nance, followed by Myrna Stanley.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Tom Nance, I live at 2013 Sierra Place. I lived a couple houses down from this project, and I'm, I'm just completely against it, because I, I really enjoy the neighborhood, I really like the small, the small quaint homes, I really do. I, I'm just not, I'm not, I'm not against large homes in any way, I'm not against the people building large homes. I just personally love this area. I bought it, I bought into this area, not to change the area, not to have my neighbors upset at me or anything. My lovely neighbors here are building next to me, it's great, I think it's fantastic. They did a great job there, or they're doing a great job. The builders, wonderful, quiet, considerate. The structure's going to be just, you know, just beautiful, it's not too big, it's just, you know, it's not intrusive to us. So I'm all, I'm all for it. But I'm just, I just look up, I look out my door, and I see these big, big homes up on the hill. It looks, it just, it looks ridiculous to me, because I don't want to change my home, and it's just acute, and all the homes are pretty much the same. So it just seems out of place. So what are we going to do? I mean, we just, guys are going to come in and start, you know, just building all these big homes, and then we're going to, we're going to really look pretty stupid with a kind of a small home in between these real large homes. So yeah, I'm just completely against it. I'm, I'm a little bit worried about the drainage, things like that. I know one of the homes was built very large around the corner, all the water goes into the neighbors behind them. You know, it's, just, you know, concerns me. There's just things about building that we have to be very careful about. A lot of oak trees on the property, just concerns, I know they want to put some more back in. But I just, you know, you just got to be careful with some of these things, and I'm just not, I'm just not for the size of the property, size of the house, so, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Myrna Stanley, followed by Kim Sellers.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayorion, and Councilman, and City Staff. My name is Myrna Stanley, and that's my real name. And I'm president of the Verdugo Woodlands Homeowners Association. I would like to address mansionization, which involves a house that is too big for the lot, and why this project falls into that category, by referencing the two motions in your packets. One is to uphold the assessment panel's determination, and the other is to overturn their determination. The first, and I'll call them finding, references size, scale, and mass. And the motion to approve the design talks about new plantings to, quote, recreate a woodland's environment, and to screen the house from neighbors, unquote. I believe the focus should be on the proposed size, scale, and mass, rather than redirect our attention to trees and plantings that would hide the house. The question is, is the proposed size, scale, and mass compatible with the neighborhood? The project would be on a lot that is 19% larger than other properties within 300 feet of the site. Yet a house 114% larger than the average home within the same 300 feet is being requested. That alone meets the criteria of mansionization in my mind. The applicant has talked about homes that are larger, or more out of scale than his project, in an effort to demonstrate that his home would fit in. He's displayed to the alternative assessment panels that the homes he displayed were built before Design Review. And we believe it is ludicrous to compare his project with homes that were so out of character with the neighborhood that this city established a Design Review process. Though the architectural style has improved dramatically, and we agree there, and architectural accents are now included, if you compare the initial submittal with the current one, the mass and scale really hasn't changed significantly. A dramatic exaggerated entry is still proposed, leading down to a very formal walled and gated street entry, that is not what the woodlands is about. As assessment panel member James called this unfortunate lot, and we recognize that he worked with the applicant to find solutions, however, we believe that creative design work is needed to come, to come up with a home that's compatible, and it can be done. For starters, the 10-foot first floor ceilings, and the nine-foot high second floor ceilings could very easily be lowered. The second finding that you have in your packets is the site layout. The motion for approval states that the proposed house location maintains compatibility with the neighborhood's front setback, that is not so. It is cited at the rear of the property unlike any other home in the neighborhood, and would present a front setback of 76 feet, compared with the neighborhood average of 28 feet. And the majority of those homes are set back 15 to 20 feet. We are not looking for a uniform setback, please understand that, and don't confuse conformity with compatibility. We're only asking for something that is more in tune with the neighborhood, and that is compatibility. The DRB and assessment panel members repeatedly warned us that we would not be happy if the house were brought forward on the lot, as it would be more intrusive, never bringing up the idea of a smaller home being brought forward on the lot. Only DRB member Carahan pointed out that a smaller home brought further forward on the lot would be compatible with the neighborhood and with the woodlands. There seems to be a reluctance on the part of some DRB members to ask for a reduction in floor area, and they make the argument that it meets the city's code. If, if meeting code is the big criteria, what's the point of Design Review? What staff could say in the staff report, although politely, they could put it, what do you care how big the house is, it meets city code. And of course, we wouldn't want them to do that. So we ask you to preserve the character and scale of our woodland neighborhoods, and those of Glendale as a whole, as a matter of fact, and overturn the assessment panel's decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could, if I could give the city clerk the first, the first submittal and the current submittal, so you can check out the scale and the mass. Thank you.
Kim Sellers, followed by Melinda Callahan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of staff. Thank you for all your hard work. My name is Kim Sellers, I remembered it for the first time, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to clear up the issue about pornography in reference to this house. You all know about Justice Potter Stewart's statement, that you may not be able to describe what pornography is, but we know it when we see it. Someone said that at one of the hearings, it was not referencing this house as being obscene. I, I don't wish to be redundant. You've been told three things, and will probably be told them again, that have absolutely nothing to do with your decision here tonight. First, you're being told that there is a large house at 1440 Wabaso. That is one house, it does not set the character for this neighborhood. The house is overlarge, it is pre-DRB. If you rely on that house for the character of the neighborhood, then you are eviscerating and gutting the Design Review statute, which is designed to make, to select houses that are compatible with the inherent character of the neighborhood. A single mistake someone said earlier shouldn't be the character of the neighborhood. Second, you've already been told several times this house meets all the zoning codes. So what? We're here for Design Review, we're not here for a CUP, we're not here for variance. So that has nothing to do with the issues you're here to decide. Third, you've been presented information from the applicant's survey. I will point out again, it is the applicant's survey, and it shows the houses that are within 300 linear feet of this project. Even that area is not relevant to what this neighborhood is. This neighborhood is the street, Sierra Place, and the homes on that street. You can't see the houses around the corner up the street, you can't see the houses around the corner going north on Wabaso from the project. The homes that are impacted, the homes that are adjacent, the homes that are nearby are on the street. But even if you go 300 linear feet down Sierra Place, and up Wabaso, and down Wabaso, you still don't find any homes that are of this magnitude. You've been told, and undoubtedly will be told again, about homes a far, far distance. They are simply irrelevant. They are simply irrelevant to what is compatible with this neighborhood. I'd like to talk to you for a minute about the setback. This project setback is really what takes it beyond the pale in this neighborhood. What you've got is a project that is going to be behind a wall, behind wrought iron gates, nothing. There are maybe three or four homes of the 1,300 homes in the Woodlands that have such a setup. This is not appropriate for the Woodlands. I thank you very much, and we ask that you reverse the appeals board decision.
Thank you. Melinda Callahan, followed by Evelyn Hansen.
Hello. My name is Melinda Callahan, and I would like to say, as I've been listening to the two different sides, I'm a bit confused. One side stating what I know as facts, I have many of the facts also written in front of me. I believe everyone here has a copy of the facts that Kim Sellers sent out, and other people are claiming that it's not true. And from what I can see, perhaps this needs, the people saying it's not true, perhaps we need to investigate exactly what is true. I believe we are only considering houses in the median area, not three blocks away, which is to be considered, I mean, the houses three blocks away don't need to be considered. And as far as conformity, my personal complaint with this particular house isn't that, isn't, truly isn't so much that it doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. If they were going to build a house made out of super adobe, which is houses being built in Hesperia from a man named Nader Kalili, it's environmentally friendly, has super insulation, it looks odd. I would say, go for it. It's excellent. The problem isn't that I don't like the look of their house. I don't care how funny the look in the house is. It's their house. The problem is the privacy. They are invading upon other people's property lines. And that is my own personal complaint. I have no desire to tell other people what color to paint their house, what style to make their house, how they should make their house. If they want to make a dome house, you know, whatever makes them happy. But when their house starts infringing upon other people's privacy, primarily their privacy, that is what I'm opposed to. And it seems as if mansionization is entirely that, imposing people's backyards. You look up and you see three stories. That's not comfortable. And the tree situation, trees die, so that cannot be a panacea because the plant situation cannot be relied on once the structure is up. So I believe that's all I need to say. For me, it was a privacy issue, and I do want to fight for our neighbors to retain a certain amount of privacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Evelyn Hansen?
Hi. My name is Evelyn Hansen. I'm a lifetime Glendale resident, as was my mother. She was born in Glendale as well. My grandfather was chief of LAPD. I suppose I have to start off with a little bit of disclosure. My house is 4,500 square feet, three stories, on a half-acre lot. Doesn't seem like this property is quite that big. I don't think that mine is out of place. Mine is the palace of my neighborhood. But I have 120-foot frontage, and all my neighbors have 50-foot frontage. I suppose I got away with it because it was put together, started in 1919, finished in 1924 before there was a design review board, and I was the first one on the block. My house was the first one on the block. I think this is a classic case of mansionization, and I think obscenity is totally relevant. This house looks obscene to me. It would be about as normal as an eight-foot-tall, 35 feet to 19 feet neighbor is double. We're talking a neighborhood. That's a family. So we're talking, in the family relation, we're talking an eight-foot-tall man married to a four-foot-tall woman. That would look very, very odd, and I think this house would look about as odd. We're talking about a family that's not strict legal code. It's a feeling. It's a warm, fuzzy thing. When you go down the street, do you feel good about this place? When you come home after a hard day's work, do you feel good about the place you're coming to, to your home, your refuge, the place that you feel comfortable with? You're not going to, when you get whacked upside the head with driving past this monstrosity, a mansionization effort by an individual who thought that they were going to be better than everyone else. I have RVs. I have an RV. And a lot of RV parks, we talk about, you can look out the window and shake hands with the neighbor next door. That's what this poor woman is going to be having. She's going to be able to shake the hand of her neighbor in this 35-foot-tall monstrosity. They say that it's to code, so it's okay. You remember the movie Towering Inferno? That was to code. That building was to code. It was the absolute minimum in every single code, just like this is the absolute maximum in every single code. The codes aren't meant to push that way, to get variances that way. City's coming after me because I use mulch in my garden, and you're gonna let somebody do this to the entire neighborhood? I'm sorry. The feel of this neighborhood is one-story. I looked at the pictures. I counted seven true one-story, three technical two-stories, but with the feel and the living space of a one-story house. I didn't see any pictures of something that felt like a three-story house like this monstrosity does. Please. I don't live near this house, but no man is an island complete unto themselves. What happens in Glendale affects me. I still lament the poor tearing down or the poor burning down of Webb's Department Store where I worked. We had a beautiful community before all the things happened that caused the design review board and the mansionization.
Michael Tehan is next. Mr. Tehan?
Good evening, Mayor Najarian and Council. My name is Michael Tehan. I live in Adams Hill. I'm here in support of the neighbors in North Glendale. We have here kind of a watershed moment. I wish this was something as simple as whether or not this house fits in this particular neighborhood. But really, what we're gonna find out as a community is whether or not the existing ordinances that were designed to protect communities from mansionization actually work and actually can be put into place with a competent and an accountable design review board. Whether or not we have to, whether we can basically leave it in place as they are with accountable, functioning, viable boards, or whether we have to throw it all out and implement all new ordinances with story polls and all those kinds of things. So we kind of have, one hand, leave it like it is, but get accountable boards or throw it all out and rewrite the code. I would argue that there is no more accountable board than city council. It is all right here. If the existing code, as it is written, is capable of protecting this neighborhood from mansionization, then you should be able to make that determination here today. I don't think the existing design review boards have been able to do that. Does this house meet some of the criteria that we had talked about implementing for making those changes to ordinances? Is it more than 35% larger than the surrounding houses on the street? We can take a look at that. I don't think that it is. Does it fit the character of the neighborhood? I don't think that it does. And if I may say one last thing, you know, we talk about redesigning and redesigning and how design review boards will try to, you know, re-engineer the house to make it fit and change the colors and put in plantings and things like that. This council can say what John Drayman had tried to get them to say on numerous occasions, and that is just say no. You don't have to say, well, if we do this or do that. We can simply say no. Go back to the drawing board. Build a house that complies. Build, have them reach out to the neighbors and find a house that works. So we can find out whether it works today or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have one last card from Mr. James from DRB 2 available for questions from the council. Is anyone interested in questioning Mr. James? No. Thank you, Mr. James, for coming. That is our last card. I think what I'm inclined to do at this point is to suspend the hearing.
We continue.
To continue the hearing. I'm gonna turn over the rest of the meeting to close the hearing.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I think the question is why continue it. I believe you would have to have the appellant, give the appellant rebuttal time, and you do have the interest discretion to give the applicant rebuttal time. I believe you said that you wanted at the subsequent council meeting to actually hear that summary of the discussion. That way, it can be refreshed in all the council.
I would invite them to use their final rebuttal at the opening of the continued hearing. That way, you can refresh us with some of the points that you think are important and give you a chance to work out your arguments and your persuasive remarks, if that's okay. I think, rather than speak...
I'm sorry, I just wanted to...
What I'd like to do is, rather than give you a chance now to speak and then close it forever and then have us pick up with the deliberation next week, I'm gonna give you and Mr. Givorkin a chance to open up the deliberations with your final remarks, with your rebuttals. And that way, you can refresh us with the points that you think are important, rather than trust our memories to hold this all together until next week. And I will reserve the right to open, can we keep the hearing open from one week to the next?
You may.
We may. Okay. So I'm not gonna close the public hearing. Well, is there a particular term just to continue?
Just a motion to continue. Leave the hearing open and continue.
Just noting that the public testimony next week will just be an opportunity for applicant and appellant to make rebuttal and closing comments.
Yes, only for the applicant and the appellant, and I'll give them 10 minutes each.
Okay.
In that regard, then, do we need to vote to continue?
Just a motion to continue.
Is there a motion to continue to next week?
To next week without further notice.
Without further notice.
First section item.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Did you second, Mr. Weaver? Did you move?
I moved.
Move. Second.
The motion was made by Councilmember Quintero.
First, it was Mr. Weaver.
Okay. And then seconded. My mistake.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I am gonna excuse myself from the meeting and put you all in the steady hands of Mr. Weaver with a stack of cards and most of the agenda left before you. So you know where we left off.
Make sure Mr. Yusefian gets a copy of the DVD.
Just push and then go a little farther. There you go.
We'll take a couple-minute break. Recession, couple minutes. Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
At least the size and shape and style of the book.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't. I apologize for that. We did talk to some printers. There is a local press called Balcony Press. We were familiar with them because they produce a lot of high-quality coffee table art-style books that we purchased for the brand, Art and Music, or Art Collection. We contacted them, and they actually have done some very fine books that are this style of commemorative book. There's one that they did for Descanso Gardens. That's a lovely book that has a very interesting layout. They did a commemorative book for the Jonathan Club and for some other organizations like that. So it's sort of right up their alley. And the price that they're quoting us so far is significantly less than some of the other publishers that we've talked to that have done similar types of books.
Well, as I mentioned originally, we did it at the Chamber years ago, and I've still got it in my...
Eight, I do too.
In my bookcase somewhere. I'll have to refresh my memory. But I do remember it was a big hit, and it was quite interesting, different photos. And so I think this is a good idea. I'll move...
One A and two?
Uh, one A, two.
Eight A, one and two.
Eight A, one and two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Local, please.
Councilmember Draymond?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Eusefian?
Mayor Najarian?
Mayor Protem Weaver?
All right. Eight B, please.
Eight B is interim director of Glendale Water and Power regarding professional services agreement for a financial advisor and bond counsel. At B1 is motion authorizing city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Public Financial Management, Inc. to act as GWP's financial advisor. At B2 is motion authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Fulbright and Jaworski, LOP, to act as GWP's bond counsel and disclosure counsel.
Mr. Quintero?
Uh, yeah. I was interested in having the staff talk about the financial advisory services. And I know we went out in 2000, in September of 2006. We asked, we issued a RFP, and I assume we had a number of firms that responded to the RFP. And so now we're going to use that same firm for this particular bond issue?
Yes, councilmembers and city staff. I'm Dave Davis, administrative analyst with Glendale Water and Power. Last September, 2006, we did go out for a request for proposal for various firms. And at that time, we didn't go through with the bond offering, as you know. This past summer, we were instructed by Director Waters to pursue this. We came back to you in July with this. And you instructed us to go back and review the request for proposal. And last September, the city staff that was here that was in charge of this is no longer with us. So we went through her files, and we found the request for proposals that went out originally. They went to a number of firms. And I, myself, and two of the administrators reviewed the request for proposals. And we still thought that PFM was the best firm to represent us.
Okay. And if there are any other bond proposals, we're going to do the same, correct? We're going to go out for another RFP?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. I'll move eight B, one.
How about two? Do you want to deal with that separately?
I'll do, no. A B, one and A B, two. Eight B, two.
Second.
I do have one card, though. Barry Allen, three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Counsel, I'm Barry Allen. The only question that I have on this particular issue is that it looks like we're going to be going out ultimately seeking a bond for, or bonds for the GWP. And I think the public should have some idea of what amount of bonds there will be. I understand where, you know, the process we're going through. But certainly, according to the staff report, there is some knowledge to what has to be replaced, and there certainly has to be a cost for that. Can you give us that information as to whether it will be $100 million, or $200 million, or $500 million for the bond that will be ultimately sold? Thank you.
Mr. Starbird, any idea?
Can you comment on the, at least the range of sizing of bonds that's being considered at this point in water and electrical?
Yes, sir.
Come to the microphone.
In the water, approximately $50 million, and electric, $60 million.
Thank you. Other questions? Local.
Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Eusefian?
Mayor Najarian?
Mayor Protem Weaver?
Hi. Eight C, please.
Eight C is interim director of Glendale Water and Power regarding status of the activities of the Glendale Water and Power public benefit programs. At AC1 is motion to note and file report.
Thank you, Mr. Starbird.
And for this, we'll go to Ned Bassin. Ned?
Ned, I have both you and Craig down. I take Craig's giving the report. He's getting
closest to the dais, so Craig will give the report.
I'm Ned Bassin, power management administrator. Craig is in charge of the programs, and he'll give the report.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, councilman, my name is Craig Keenan. I'm the PBC marketing manager. I do have a slideshow if you want to see it, or...
How long is, how many slides?
It can, it can, it's like 18, but it can be quick.
Or he has a...
Or I have a paper copy, and I can just go over.
I'd like to have, I'd like to have the public get some idea.
Okay.
Maybe not all 18, but let's at least talk about what you're doing.
Link through them.
Here's... While we're waiting for, the report, the report that I'll present will cover our expenditures, our energy savings, water savings, some awards we received, our programs and our results, and some future things we'll want to bring before you for consideration. Just as a introduction, the PBC program is a state-mandated program. It's funded by ratepayers for customers. It's 2.85% on each customer's bill, and it's to fund energy efficiency, renewable energy, and low income in research and development programs. It's, it's not, it should be on this. No, it's not on, it's on the...
PBC?
No, it's not it. Well, it's supposed to be on this right here. It should be, there you go. Okay.
Are you giving a copy of that?
Yes. This mouse. Well, I was going to make it quick. Okay. All right. So, this is going to recover fiscal year 2006, 2007. As far as our collections, expenditures, and fund balance, we collected approximately $3.9 million last year. We expended 6.7, of which the 6.7 was approved by city council for last year. 2.2 million of that was for the, went towards the solar project that's being constructed over at the college on top of the parking center. Right now, the funding balance, we're looking at 2.2 million. You look, this reddish color here, it was the balance. In the early years, we were collecting money, but we had no programs. It was, we started to develop programs. The balance has come down. This line here is what the state mandated collections are. We've been collecting a little bit less than that. I think we've been, mandate is 2.85%. We've been collecting about 2.5. So that's what we'll, that's one of the issues we're going to come back and talk to you about, is we need this yellow line to be up here where the blue line is. The demand in energy savings, in '05, '06, we were fourth in the state in energy savings out of 39 local utilities that reported. The only local utilities that were larger than us were SMUD, LA, and Anaheim. So that was pretty good for us as far as that goes. Our energy savings in 2006, 2007, we're looking at around 8,200 megawatt hours cumulative from this program since 2000 is about 56,000 megawatt hours.
Craig, I'm sorry, but give us some context. How many megawatt hours do we use in the course of the year?
Single-family home uses probably seven megawatt hours a year.
Seven megawatt hours. So it's equivalent to, what is that, 8,000?
Eleven hundred and so.
Eleven hundred and so.
Yeah. And this is, that's, that's higher math for me. That's...
Eight thousand or so.
Okay. So it's significant savings there. If you look, we have a goal of one...
Quick question. You mentioned SMUD, that's up in Sacramento.
Yes.
You mentioned LA.
LA.
And what other?
Anaheim.
And Anaheim.
And Anaheim doesn't do its own local generation. They just do, they purchase outside.
Yeah, they purchase most of theirs. And as far as our goal, we have a goal of 1% of annual sales as far as our energy efficiency target for the year. The best state programs, according to AC Triple E, which is an organization that, it's an ADISC-type organization, they do between 0.2 and 0.8%. In '06, '07, we did about 0.72, so, and we've averaged about 0.8. The best year we had was '03, '04. We got up to about 0.91. So we haven't met the 1% goal, but we're still amongst the best in, you know, the country as far as savings go. We also get some water savings from our programs. Our programs to date have saved about 426 acre feet, and I'm told about a half an acre foot per single-family home. So that's equal to, what, 851 or so or two homes. We put in a lot of water-saving measures in our home energy audit program. We go in, we'll change out the faucet aerators and showerheads. And we also give rebates for high-efficiency washing machines and toilets, things like that. We, past three years, we won the CMUA, which is the California Municipal Utility Association Award for Most Innovative and Comprehensive Programs. We won it for small utility category. We've won it three years in a row. As far as programs, we have a number of senior and low-income programs, senior care, guardian helping hand, cool care, peacogs. Anybody that's interested can call our customer service and find out more about them. But the first two are bill-discount programs. They give you money off the bill. Helping hand is for people who are having trouble paying their bill or coming up with a deposit. Refrigerator replacement and recycling program. And the peacogs program is one of the ones we won the award for. It helps change out air conditioning units on apartment buildings. The thing with apartment buildings is landlords don't pay the energy bill, so they're reluctant to change the unit based on energy savings. They'll just keep them maintained. So by giving incentives to change about, we reduce the bills for our customers.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes, Mr. Draymond?
Before you go on, yes. Actually, it was, we'll kill two birds. It was something I was going to bring up during council and staff comments, and it relates to that last issue there, units replaced. I had asked some time ago about the loop, sort of a missing moment in our program there. There are condominium projects in the city of Glendale where the association itself owns the air conditioning units rather than individual homeowners within the condominium owning those units. There is no program for those condominium associations. In other words, just as you said, if you own an apartment house, and, and you own, as the owner of the building, own all those air conditioning units, you have the opportunity to replace them if you meet the criteria and get some assistance. But a condominium association that owns those units is not accorded that, that program right now. If, on the other hand, I lived in a condominium association where I, as an individual homeowner, owned the unit within my unit or on the roof, then that rebate would, would kick in. But not if the association itself owns it. And the association itself is in the same bind that the apartment owner is in. I can give you a case of a, of a building where there's 100, more than 100 units. They own all of those units. They can't afford to replace them, so they're operating with 30-year-old units or 20-year-old units. And having come to the city, they've just been told, "We didn't think about that when we put this together." So I asked some time ago, when I first came here, about that. I haven't heard back yet. And that's actually, I was going to ask today. And that, I would like to, to get some movement on that, at least find out whether that's something that can be addressed, and if not, why not.
Well, yes, we could, we can look at, we do have a couple of programs that would cover that situation. We do have a rebate program, and we do have a program for large business customers that provides 25% incentive for any kind of energy efficiency project or...
Not in this case.
Well, and Craig, it isn't, I mean, it seems to me from the, the objective is to gain more efficiency and reduce usage of energy. Whether they're apartments or they're condos, the same principles will apply.
Oh, I'm not saying we, we couldn't look at a program that might, that would cover...
It does seem to me that the, the inefficient, the, I mean, I don't like the name of it, but the Peacog AC program would, the same results are there whether it happens to be a condo structure or an apartment structure.
I understand. But the problem, the problem is, is that, that these associations were contacting me earlier, saying, you know, they've contacted the city, and what they're told is, "No, you can't be a part of this because we don't have a specific category."
Who pays, who pays the electric bill for the condos? Is it the condominium?
Yeah, the association itself.
All right.
These three of them that I know of, they're all large.
Let's bring something back soon, Craig, can we?
That's, that's something we'll...
That should be easy.
Yeah.
That'll get us our next one.
It could, yeah. As far as general residential programs, we have our solar program. We have our energy and water-saving survey program. We have a rebate program. We also have a program to remove secondary refrigerators, ones that be in use in the garage. We have a LivingWise program, which, it's a education program for sixth-grade science students in the school district. We have a Tree Power, which is free shade trees. And we have a tune-up program for...
Would you give us a little more information about the smart home solar and what we're doing in that?
That program right now, it pays $4 a watt, up to 10 KW on a resident. We actually have one for small business, too. That program is being reviewed and changed right now with the California Energy Commission. They've just issued like 70 pages of new guidelines on the program. So we're going to have to come back to you on that program. And what specific, did you want to know the results or...
One of the questions I have, did anyone from the staff go down to Long Beach for this solar, it was a huge solar...
Had a solar event in Long Beach. I did not attend. I have a meeting with SCAPPA tomorrow.
Okay. It's an annual event. It's an annual event. Last year was in the north. This year was in the south. I didn't get a chance to go. But I recommend the staff maybe get some information about it. And I'm sure that all the vendors were there, so we can really start to focus on, on this whole home solar issue, especially with the new construction that we have going on. And let's tie in with the, with the new state regs, and let's do something. Certainly, there's enough variation in the market. I mean, from Israel to Europe to US, Japan, there's lots of choices. So I hope we can get rolling on this.
That, that would, yes, we can, as far as the, the new regulations I was talking about, it will, it will require Glendale to budget $1.5 million a year in additional funds just for, for solar. $15 million over 10 years. So that should go a long ways towards what you're, want us to do, so.
Okay.
As far as our results, general residential programs, we spent about 1.2 million, or our goal is 1.2 million, and we spent about that much, too. We did 1,300 surveys, processed close to 4,500 rebates, or planted 570 trees. And there were 63 kilowatts of new solar installed. We, our program is doing better than, than most as far as that goes.
Only 572. Villagrosas cannot plant a billion. That's what the paper said.
Who is?
LA.
Oh, LA, well...
Yeah, it was on the headlines. They're going to plant a billion. They just can't find them. That's where...
I don't comment about it.
Does the 63 kilowatts include the college?
No. The college is 261. That should be done in December. As far as small business programs, we have our, our, our Smart Business Energy Upgrade Program, this, Peacogs for Small Business. We have a solar program, and we have a tune-up program. This Smart Business Energy Upgrade Program, we started, actually, the council suggested we do something like this five years ago, and now pretty much every utility in the state is doing this program, this exact program. It's, LA's just issued an RFP through SCAPPA for $50 million three-year program on, is pretty much the same thing. So that, that, we're really proud of that program. And we've had, we've had one, one customer in the, the small business solar, that, getting back to what we were saying about the Peacogs. If you don't own the building and you're a renter or whatever, you're not necessarily going to invest in solar on top of something that's, you know, you don't own. And so we're going to have some challenges trying to get small businesses to participate. Excuse me. Our small business results, we budgeted about $1 million. We spent $855,000. We've done about 462 audits and retrofits of small businesses. And that, that's the one system, the 12 KW system that was installed. All right. And then we have our large business program. We have the, the BES program is our primary program. It's the one that does the 25% of the cost of a project. We also have this e-meter management program. We're trying to get into automated metering. This is, this is not what you might consider smart metering. This is the old AMR thing. So I know that's an issue that you have been talking about.
Mr. Weaver?
Mr. Draymond?
Smart metering is, when you say automated metering, what does that mean?
Smart metering, there's, the smart metering is two-way communications, where you can read the meter, you can shut off the meter, you can communicate with appliances in the home.
By you, you mean the utility. GWP can read remotely.
You, you can, expanded customer services, you can let people know what their bill is pretty much any day of the month. You can bill on pretty much any day of the month. The old technology was just one-way communication. You could read the meter, but you couldn't send information back.
The advantage is residents can come to know what their energy usage is over time. And in time, you can go to different tiers of pricing that'll give incentives for even residential users to be off-peak, for example.
Mm-hmm. Back east, they have these glowing balls, and they'll change six different colors depending on what the price of electricity is at that time. So if it glows red, you know to turn stuff off. But, you know, that's just, that's experimental right now, so. We have some government school programs. This, this is the partnership with the college where we worked with them on their new chiller plant, and they allowed us to build our PV system on top of the parking garage. We did some, the SolarBees, which are solar-powered mixing systems in the reservoirs. We completed a study of the pumping in the water, for the water system. It shows substantial energy savings. And we, that e-meeting manager is the same thing for city buildings. We, we've installed meters and internet connections to 33 buildings. We're just, we're having trouble reading them. It's just, that's, we'll hopefully get that worked out in the next couple of months. Here's the results of those. This is a drawing of what the parking structure's supposed to look like with the solar finally on top of it. And the agenda items that we'll need to come back to you, we need to come up with another two-year budget in the next few months. And in that, also, we have the new solar program requirements that are being established by CEC right now. That's the one where I said a million and a half a year for 10 years, $15 million worth of solar. In doing that, it has to be new funding. You can't touch your low-income and energy efficiency programs that you have right now. And it'll establish new guidelines for incentives, technologies, and such. We have to look at the public benefit charge and adjustment to correct the under-collection problem, and to consider whether or not we want this to be funded out of the public benefit charge. So, and I also had a list of programs in there, and we'll certainly include the one, Councilman Draymond.
Mr. Weaver, if I can?
Yes, Mr. Draymond.
Craig, six months ago or so, the school district had a presentation at the school board meeting on the energy efficiencies and savings they had achieved in their various programs. Following that, your office had sent us some information on the amount of public benefit charge funds we've made available to the district. It seemed to me it was a neighborhood of three-plus million dollars over several years. Do you recall the figures?
I think it was, it was close to a million dollars. It was over...
Okay. Well, you're not remembering the numbers.
Yeah.
Could you, could you pull that up and get us that again? I know, at the time, it was noted that a good portion of the savings that they were reporting on, that they achieve every year, in large part was due to the investments that we funded in, in, through the public benefit charge program, and many of the improvements that they had. And over a number of years running, we were giving them fairly sizable grants in the $400,000 to $500,000 range.
That's what I was thinking, is the grant total. You're talking about the actual dollar in energy savings.
Dollar energy savings, total amount of grants in dollar energy savings.
Sure.
Okay. Make your presentation. There's no questions. We do have speakers. Three speakers. Nancy Kent, three minutes.
My name's Nancy Kent. I'm a resident of Glendale, and all of these programs are beneficial. But I wanted to commend the city for putting the solar energy panels on top of the college parking structure. And I'd like to encourage the city to do more solar energy projects on public buildings or parking structures, or even over-surface parking lots, if that's possible, on city buildings, or school buildings, or Glendale College buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Evelyn Hansen?
Hi, my name is Evelyn Hansen. I'm a longtime resident of Glendale. I have a 5K photovoltaic system on my roof. I spent a lot of money to be part of the solution, instead of part of the problem. I don't know how y'all feel about that. I'd like to, to give some feedback on what it was like to get that system in. Took us 10 months to get permits. I was out of town during a good part of that, but my engineer said that she came down here and addressed, I believe she said she addressed the city council twice to get it put in. I, I think she also might have had to go in front of the design review board. I don't remember. She was, she had posters and pictures of, of what it was going to look like from all over here to get, to get photovoltaic panels on my roof. You might want to think about what it's going to be like. I'm, I'm pretty committed. A lot of people say I should be committed. But I, it was really important to me. I have to be able to justify to my children the kind of world I hand them. So it was important to me to do it, and I stuck with it. Most people aren't going to. Most people, you put a little bit of a roadblock in their way, and they're going to walk away from it. I'd also like to address, I used to be a city worker, well, actually, this part, I worked for the phone company up on telephone poles. What is going to happen from a safety point of view for city workers when you have all these residential roofs feeding the grid, and something happens on a power pole, and I, as a city worker, have to go onto that power pole? Am I going to know how many roofs I have solar or photovoltaic systems on? For my photovoltaic system, I have a disconnect agreement. City of Glendale can come by any time, disconnect me for safety. I think that's right. Do they have a list? Do they, I mean, certainly, they can see the photovoltaic panels on my roof, but they don't know I don't have a battery bank. I got a pretty large house. I could afford a battery bank if I weren't committed to feeding the grid. Are they going to know that they have to go turn my power off to feed the grid? Or am I going to pump 5K worth of juice right into them at noon on, on a summer day? I'm not excited about that idea, and I don't think you want to be either. You might look into that. Another thing, kids, you got to get the kids involved in the schools. My children attended Glendale City Schools. I don't know how many times I went to pick my children up. Looked in the daycare building, the... Looked in the daycare building, the bungalow, both doors were standing wide open, the air conditioning running full. We're a summer day, July, it's like an icebox in that little bungalow, with both doors standing open. And I closed the doors, as any environmentalist would. I went and found the teachers responsible, and their reaction was, "Well, I don't pay the bill, I don't care." And it also liked one last minor thing, water. What are we doing about saving water? I know we're supposed to be reducing, what are we doing about it? We encourage people to use mulch. Are we going to come after them for Chapter 5, Section 1001.1, which states you cannot have dried dead vegetation in your yard, which is what the city has filed criminal charges against me twice for?
Your three minutes are up, ma'am. Thank you for the message. Herbert Milano?
Mayor Protem Weaver, members of the city council, city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. For the past several months, I have been speaking, from time to time, to the Water and Power Commission on creating truly effective and measurable goals for water conservation and energy. And I've been doing some research with regard to what other cities are doing, including cities in Europe. But I believe there's a Canadian city that ran into a very interesting problem. They were trying to address the issue of many residents who were not paying their bills, and they came up with a solution where they handed and installed these devices at their home, where they could preset it for a certain amount of fee. So, they, they say they have $300, they'll assign $300 charge to that equipment, and then, they will be able to monitor their usage. Well, the interesting thing was that they found out that their usage dropped by 30%. They were wondering if there was something wrong with the meters, and there was actually nothing wrong. What occurred was that when people were informed of how much usage they were going through every single day, they themselves started cutting down on their usage. So, when someone presents to you smart metering as being this very expensive, convoluted, two-way system, it's actually the whole range of things. And some of them are actually quite simple, and they've been used in millions of, I'm sorry, hundreds of thousands of homes up in Canada. So, I think that we have an opportunity to look at other ways that we can immediately benefit significantly our grid and our power usage by installing some things that are not so far off into the future, that are available now, already in use, and could have some very significant impacts. My other, my other comments that I may forward to this commission is the issue of creating tangible goals with regard to water conservation, and giving us numbers that are easily followed up, such as maybe 50 gallons per day per person, or 200 gallons per day per residence, for example. And, it's only when we have easy numbers that are clear and effective can we engage our students, you know, and the rest of the family, especially if we get the information on a more frequent basis, so that we know if we're really approaching those goals or not. And those things are not that complex to do, and could easily be adapted, you know, in the water bill with some nice, clear messages that could be sent out to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. No more cards? Mr. Quintero?
Before I move 8C1, let me just say that I agree that while the technology is still in a sort of, I don't think, clear in terms of what's going to be the best of the smart meters, we could do something in the meantime, maybe if it's just a demonstration project, but we can certainly explore doing something to begin to monitor the usage a little better and to have some feedback from the, the actual electrical users. So, I think that's a good idea, I hope the staff can pursue that. I'll move 8C1.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian? Mayor Najarian? Mayor Protem Weaver?
All right. Let's go back to the beginning now, to four.
Item number four?
Yes.
City council and staff comments.
Comments on that? Mr. Drayman?
Thank you, Mr. Weaver, I have a few. One relates to an area in Chevy Chase Estates called Drury Lane. And on that particular small stretch, there are 10 homes, five on either side of the street, five on the north side, five on the south side of the street. And, the homeowners that have been contacting me there have indicated that they've been trying to get a repaving of the street for some time, for some years. They've sent a number of photographs, I would just like to pass them on, but raise the issue so that some kind of follow-up will come back.
Is it public street or private?
Yes, it is. And, and if you take a look at these, you'll see that it is, so...
You'll pass them off to your city engineer?
They, they look pretty, pretty bad, as you'll see. Let me see here. The other has to do with another block in Glendale, it's the 1700 block of Hillside, which is just east of Kenyatta Boulevard, on both the north and south side of the street. Apparently, the problem is one of, it's an area that's used by a lot of students attending the college, that are parked there from very early in the morning throughout the day. And so, since they're there throughout the day, and they're taking their lunches in their car, and the trash and all of that goes into the street and onto the adjacent homes, the parkways and the lawns, and because the cars are, and that is one problem in and of itself, but the other problem is, of course, that because the cars are basically there all morning long, the street sweeping is ineffective because the vehicles are always parked there. So, they're interested in knowing about what their options are with regard to...
I think it'd be the same as Crescent Valley High School.
I, I'm guessing so, Mr. Weaver. I'm guessing so. And so, I would like to know if, if we can look, take a look at that block. It's a 1700 block.
Do you have a contact person?
Do you have a contact?
I do, I, I don't feel comfortable reading it into the...
Okay, if you give it to Rubik when we're done, it sounds like a candidate for on-street permit parking, as I have in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
Also, Mr. Weaver, I'd like to remind people about the, the Montreux Oktoberfest, which is this Saturday, in the Montreux Shopping Park in the 23 and 2400 block, and I believe that is, I believe, is it from noon till 11, I believe? I might have the hours off a little bit, but from noon till 11. And then, lastly, I want to take just a moment, because I had indicated that I would let people know about some of the highlights of, of the suggestions that were emailed in with regard to what to do with that room.
Oh, goodness.
And so, here, here, you can't wait. Well, I'm not going to hold you in suspense any longer. We had one here, for mini soccer field, but there were a lot of references to animals and insects, by the way, some of which I'll read, but most of which I won't. Storage for council swords, shields, and extraneous gladiator paraphernalia, is another. New dog park was another, although, there was a note, although it might increase the maintenance budget, PS is the office carpeted.
Yes.
So, that was a question of using it for a dog park. An office for a new in-house therapist with a sign reading "The Doctor Is In." A lounge for frequent speakers before council, so that Mr. Milano, Mr. Espirito, and others can have a green room in which to warm up each evening before oral communications. There was one that related to Uncle Milty's ant farm, and using the room to raise ants, and then sell them, of course, because the city can use the revenue. And lastly, as an earthworm farm, with the note, "Hey, the city needs income from some source." So, the, so those are some of the potential uses, I'm not sure all of them will be useful, but I guess this is a note and file in a different sort of way, perhaps note and file and a round file.
The room is two doors away from my...
I understand, so we'll keep the animals out.
Next door to Kim?
Yes, Mr. Quintero. I thank you very much.
Actually, we can increase the square footage, I might donate my space, too.
If that happens, yes.
Kind of a double lot.
Don't do anything, Mr. Quintero, that's going to involve the, getting a building permit, I wouldn't suggest that, so. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any comments? Okay, I have a couple. Before it gets very stale and people forget, last week, some things were said, and I just wanted to clarify on the mailing that was done, because we got a clarification on the mailings. I think we, somebody said over 100, mailings were made, 48 returned. There's approximately 750 homes in Glen Oaks Canyon, you mailed 661. The only ones left out were probably Penerton, Glen Oaks, Sleepy Hollow, Havre Camp, Perkins, just about everybody else was included in the mailing. So, out of the 661, 48 returned. Of the 48, some were duplicates, resulting in only 36. Of the 36, only 12 were properties along Glen Oaks Boulevard. So, when you start talking 48 out of 100, and it's really 12 out of 661, it's quite different. In fact, a couple of those that didn't, were on there, I think the gentleman has passed away, and he's still on the roll. A couple others were vacant hillside land. So, I just want to clarify that anybody thought that the, that we're so far off on our mailings with all these being returned, was an extremely small percentage of the total. The other thing, because it is very personal, and it has been concluded, it did affect my family, it was embarrassing to my family and to myself, I'm now in a position to read what I received. And it says as follows, "I am pleased to advise you that Herbert, that Herbert Milano has voluntarily dismissed with prejudice his First Amendment lawsuit brought against the City of Glendale and Dave Weaver. As you may recall, Mr. Milano filed suit after he was not allowed to rebut a comment made by Dave Weaver during a city council meeting. He claimed his First Amendment rights were violated by this action. Shortly after the action was filed, we sent Mr. Milano's attorneys a letter advising him that the lawsuit was meritless, and that they and Mr. Milano could be subject to sanctions for pursuing it. We pointed out legal authority which supported our position, and submitted the video from the meeting which completely blied the allegations made by Mr. Milano. After receiving that letter, Mr. Milano's attorneys obtained a court order allowing them to withdraw from the case, leaving Mr. Milano to represent himself. We had a status conference in court last week, and Mr. Milano did not appear, despite being required to by the court rules to do so. Within a few days of that hearing, we were contacted by Mr. Milano's new attorneys, advising that a dismissal with prejudice would be filed, the case is now terminated. A frivolous lawsuit brought on, which embarrassed not only myself, but my family. I hope we don't see more, and I'm still waiting for the final costs on Mr. Milano's lawsuit against the City of Glendale on the downtown specific plan, and I want to know the costs, not only to our outside attorneys, but to our inside staff, and that's, that's going to go over half a million dollars of your tax dollars that did that." Thank you. If there's no other comments, what's next, please?
Item five is consent items. Following our routine, it may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed, and there is one card.
Two cards on 5F?
Card.
Is there a motion on the remainder, or?
I want to move, I'll move the consent calendar, but I would also like to pull 5E.
So, is there a motion for 5A, B and C?
Can D. So, moved.
Second, okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian? Mayor Najarian? Mayor Protem Weaver?
All right. Please read 5E.
5E is interim director of Glendale Water and Power regarding request for proposal for the major overhaul of the steam turbine generator at Grayson Unit Number 2. At E1 is resolution appropriating $2,050,000. At E2 is resolution authorizing interim director of Glendale Water and Power to advertise for proposals.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero.
There were lots of allegations flying around last Tuesday, and one of them was a allegation to the effect that somehow our utilities were in disrepair, specifically the Grayson plant was on the verge of collapse, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'm just curious whether anyone from GWP can just tell us what we're doing, because we're in the process of refitting our steam turbine. We have bought a peaker unit years ago, a few years ago, for that same Grayson power plant, which increased our efficiency, lowered the amount of pollution, just an excellent addition to the Grayson plant. So, could you just talk about this?
Is it falling apart? Should we get concerned?
I'm Ned Bassin, Power Management Administrator, and it is not falling apart. Some of the units are very old, they've been very well taken care of, and we've been maintaining them. Over the last few years, we retired two older inefficient units and replaced it, just as you've said, with a modern 50-megawatt combustion turbine with all of the latest air pollution equipment. We've also begun taking our share of power from the Magnolia Generating Station, which is just, just across, you can see it from the Grayson plant, and we call it local generation. So, it is generation that is available to us in case a transmission line fails. So, we've added another 50, 40 megawatts with the Magnolia plant. Over the last few years, we've done a turbine overhaul on Unit 5, a turbine overhaul on Unit 4 with the generator rewound, and we are now doing the turbine overhaul on Unit 2. This is normal maintenance. The maintenance was deferred back in the 90s when there looked like deregulation. So, a few years ago, we were faced with a number of units that were, had not been maintained to the standards that you would like, and we were trying to make up for that. It does take time, we can only do so much work at a time, because we keep the, the power plant available for service to provide electricity during the rest of the year. So, we are making progress, and the item before you is an example of that.
Mr. Starbuck?
Mr. Minister?
Mike, Mike?
Just to put things in perspective, how many of these steam generators do we have in our base-load generator system?
We, we have three steam turbine units that are simply steam turbines, and then we have two steam turbine units that are part of our combined cycle system. And this unit 2 is part of our combined system.
So, it's one of the major generators of the plant?
It's one, it's tied to another generator, so it becomes one of the major generators, and it is one of the most efficient units that we have now.
Very good, thank you for clearing that up. And as a matter of fact, I actually had a number, I had three people that spoke to me over the weekend and questioned, and even seemed a little bit concerned about the Grayson plant. So, I told them, no, I think everything is just fine, and I'm just happy to, to hear it officially from the GWP staff. I'll move 5E1 and 2.
I think Mr. Drayman second it, but yes...
Well, I'll second it, but I also just wanted to make a comment, because I also asked that evening about the same question, and recently, Mr. Bassin, you were one of the, the people who, along with Assistant City Manager McFall, and Mr. Morehouse, and, and Mr. Abweig kindly took me on a fairly extensive tour of Grayson, and at not one point did anybody indicate to me, as a newly-elected council member, that this facility was on the brink of collapse, or that it was not meeting, was not there to meet our needs. And so, I was pretty shocked to hear that we were on the, on the verge of a major collapse here.
Last week.
I can just, just say that the people that work at Grayson take great pride in that plant.
Clearly.
They treat it, they treat it like, like it's their own, and they work very hard to maintain it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
With that, roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian? Mayor Najarian? Mayor Protem Weaver?
All right. Read 5F into the record.
5F is Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services regarding Pacific Pool Development Work at Pacific Park. F1 is motion authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with RJM Design Group, Inc., RJM of San Juan Capistrano, for a total amount of $68,970.
I have two cards, but I was going to pull those two. I have two cards, but I was going to pull those two. For the speakers, I'd like clarification. As an engineer, when I see the word "design" in the bed, it means "design." And I don't, since we've had this discussion, what is a neighborhood pool versus an aquatic center, and we're still kicking that around, I want to make sure that whatever this consultant's going to do, he's not going to design some pool before we settle on what kind of pools going in. So the design, word "design," I think, may have been out of place.
I think we, I'm sorry, George Chapton, Director of Parks and Recreation, Mayor Protem Weaver, council members, it really is not a design. We're going to be looking at several options. We're going to be going out and doing community meetings, looking at the site, all the site work involved, and then come back to the city council with potential site plans and the type of pool that you may want to place at that site.
That's all I wanted to clarify.
Right, it is a little premature to put the word "design" in there.
Thank you, Mr. Starbuck.
Mr. Mayor, I thought the best description was, we're really sentencing the staff report is, is toward the end, it says, "The work would include site analysis, workshops in the neighborhood, programming studies which will result in summary of program recommendations, conceptual plan alternatives, including site and architectural floor plans, elevations and sections, and an opinion of probable cost." All of that then lets us come back to you, so you can pick through what would be at least two alternatives for a project.
Well, I read that, when I saw that word "design."
Right. No, this is not, this is not design, Ray, construction drawings.
Well, as I remember the discussion, I thought we were all pretty much in agreement that we're looking for a neighborhood pool.
Right, right, right. And this is it.
And I think some of the discussion was, should we build just a basic 25-yard, or should we put a little bit more in there that can draw more people and bring in more revenue? So we'll be looking at that and coming back to give you that option.
Very good. Okay, I have two speakers. Herbert Milano, three minutes. By Dr. Richard Espirito.
Mayor Protem Weaver, members of the city council, city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. Ever since the pool at Pacific Park was closed, this is, by the way, a pool where I used to take my children when they were smaller. It came to me, it came to light that really the residents of Glendale have been without a true municipal aquatic facility for a very long time. And even though the outlet for many of these kids to use, the Glendale Unified School District pools, have been, has been available, they don't quite provide the type of ambience or the kind of environment where the children can truly enjoy themselves. Aquatic facilities aimed for competition are not necessarily the best ones today. On several trips that I have made to Las Vegas, I had customers there, I stopped by Henderson, Nevada, and took a look at their reputation, or the reasons why their reputation was so excellent. And so I sent out an email to all of you when you went to Vegas to try to bring in more developers here to Glendale, to stop by Henderson, Nevada, and look at what they have done, and it's available on the web. They have a multi-generational facility that is truly magnificent. They also have another aquatic center that has a zero-entry pool, games for the kids. By the way, and that entry pool is allowable for people in wheelchairs to come in and roll themselves into that. It's a soft bottom. It has one single twisting slide for teenagers, and it also has three lanes for actually lap swimming, all within a very compact size. So we're not asking, I guess, or I'm not asking for, for us to recreate a wheel, but I think that when residents begin to take a look at what other communities have done, that I think it's, it's a community that well deserves it for the following reasons. It has the greatest buildup of residents of any part of Glendale. It has the fewest number of developed park space. And because they are multifamily, most of the time, there's very little front setback for these kids to play in, no yard whatsoever, and as opposed to the needs of Northern Glendale, where you have, you know, adequate front yards and backyards and swimming pools. I think that this city deserves to provide this area residents what they haven't had for a very, very long time, and it's a respite from the, you know, the heat and something for them to do during the summer, and hopefully something for them to do year-round if we make it so. And I hope that you really move along, and hopefully by next summer, we have at least the beginning of something tangible for these communities. Thank you.
Dr. Espirito is gone. With that, I have no more cards.
I'll move 5F1.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian. Mayor Najarian. Mayor Protem Weaver.
All right. Next, please.
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, question. How many people are here on 2830 North Verdugo Road?
Is that the intersection of Los Encinos?
Yes. Okay. With that, Mr. Gani, would you give a brief, very brief background about that, because we received, what, 20, 30 emails on this property the last day or two?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Mayor Protem. This is 2830 North Verdugo Road. This was a project to construct a new one-story, 3,984 square foot retail building with 16 at-grade parking spaces on a lot that's approximately 11,000 square feet. This was a vacant lot, and it's located in the C1 zone. On January, I'm sorry, on December 7th, 2006, the DRB, this only required one discretionary permit because it met code, and the permit that was, the review that was required was design review, and it, the design review board approved this project on December 7th, 2006.
Was it noticed?
This was noticed, and there was, in fact, and we, we looked at the case file, and even, it was noticed, and people were aware of it, because we know, we know people were aware of it because they submitted even a petition against it with several signatures. However, it was a permitted use and it met code, and it met the design review.
And was it appealed? Design review?
It was not appealed, as far as I could tell.
Okay. And they have all the necessary building permits?
Correct. Building permit was issued on August 21st, 2007.
And the oak trees on the site are protected? Other trees that are not protected trees can be removed and will be removed?
That's correct.
Anything else that needs to know?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Because there was a lot of, not a lot, but there was talk about how this was trying to be snookered through on the QT, it didn't go through the process. I personally had checked this out months ago.
I do, I do, if I may, I do want to add something, that when we were looking at the case file, it appeared that there was a lot of correspondence and interaction between the case planner, who happens to be actually out of town, Vili Azamaititis, the senior planner. She had received emails and phone calls from the community, and she had, she had a track record of investigating every issue that had been raised to her to make sure that she, there was any record of any kind of allegation or any kind of claim on what the property was subject to or wasn't. And it was only after she was clearly notified that there was nothing on record to verify anything that she proceeded.
And, of course, a lot of cheap talk going around, but if the one piece of talk that I've heard comes to reality, the idea is those oak trees are going to be cut down. They do, I want to take serious action against any party that does that. I hope it does not happen. I don't think it will. But, yeah, because it's not the first time one of our oak trees has been cut down on the dead of night. I don't think he's going to do it. I'm just going, putting a warning out, Mr. City.
Mr. Mayor Protem, Mr. Steve Zern, the Director of Public Works, has assigned this project to staff who is closely monitoring the progress.
Very good. With that, now I'm going to try to get the four of you, I went through the deck to try to get all of you at one time that are interested in that. Okay. Paul Meadows, you're here on that, right?
I am. Good evening. My name is Paul Meadows. I live at 1854 Los Encinos, and the only comment I will make is that I've lived in that area for five years, and I never saw any notice, nor did any of my immediate neighbors. So the only thing I'm concerned about is that somehow a lot of us are missing the opportunity to make a comment.
You mean for the design review?
For the design review.
That's all that you would have got notice on, correct?
But I don't know how that notice is disseminated, and as I said, none of my immediate neighbors ever heard about this until just recently, and I certainly didn't see it, and I pay attention to all the actions of the city council.
We can show you a copy of the petition signed by 21, 22 people in the area.
I understand that. I understand that people have signed it, but obviously a lot of people are missing the opportunity because they're not being made aware of these notices, and that's, I think, a serious issue that's going to go on.
Be aware, all you could have commented on, even if you had got it, was the design of the market, nothing else.
I couldn't do that because I didn't get the notice.
But that would have been all you could have commented.
But I would have liked that opportunity, sir.
I know, I understand, clearly. Mr. Starbuck?
And Mr. Mayor, I think this is another case. We'll go back and look in the file, because there's a complete file on this.
They have your address.
And the notices, and find out how many were returned, if indeed notices were returned. And once again, we use, we, we use the, well, we don't use it, the applicants are required to bring us a mailing list based on the county assessor's parcel information, so.
That's correct. Within the 300-foot radius of the property, of the property, too.
We'll check it out.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Kim Gosny, or whatever, for saying, gotcha. Did I say it right?
No, that's okay.
I'm Kim.
Oh, it's me.
Gosny?
Gosny.
Mayor Protem, council and staff, thank you very much for taking the time to listen to our community. We are a ravined community, so our, oh, I'm sorry, Kim Gosny, and I live on Alpha Road. Our community is in a ravine, so even within 300 feet, the impact of a project like this is still felt outside of whatever range you're looking at, because essentially there's two ways in and out of our community. And so I'm speaking on regard of this development plan for 2830 North Verdugo Road. All my comments are pretty much questions if we could call for a discretionary review, because we believe that this needs a higher level of review on all of the plans. And one of the questions I have is, has a traffic study been conducted that takes into account these number of points? That the Glendale Beeline stops every 20 minutes at peak periods at Alpha Road on Verdugo Road? The delivery truck schedules for the current businesses that already are on Verdugo Road? There is a 30-minute green curb parking, curb on the east side of Verdugo Road, and how that is used in a 30-minute cycle during the day? Commuting traffic that goes up and down Verdugo Road, morning and evening, night traffic, and weekend traffic for Gloriata Park, both pedestrian and automotive? And then adding in a projection of this new businesses, catering vans, delivery trucks, employee parking, and customer parking? And trying to assess traffic concerns for that area? So if that has not been already conducted, I would like to ask if and when that will be conducted for the community. Then there's an issue of soil testing on the ground to ensure that the soil is not contaminated from the old gas station, and wondering if that is an environmental concern that will be addressed. And then currently, the small businesses in our area have the following closing times in the evening. Palace Liquor is Monday through Saturday, they close at 9:00, and Sunday they close at 8:00 p.m. The Pet Cabin is Monday through Saturday, it closes at 5:00, and it's closed on Sunday. Great Escape Beauty Parlour, they don't post hours, but kind of the, the mythos is that they're Tuesday through Saturday, no later than 8:00, when they have appointments, and they're closed Sunday and Monday. So do we have any guarantees that this business will not stay open later, and what are the noise ordinances for our area? Since we're in a ravine, it's a natural amphitheater, and another question comes up with if it is going to be at all a banquet hall use, which has been a concern of the community, and so we have to ask that question. And if that is an intention, is that a permitted kind of situation so that we have that information? And then the rest of it, the only other thing I can say is, I'm a employee of a botanical garden, and the oak trees with parking on them or with surface structure weight on them, the compaction on the root system will eventually kill those oak trees. So the, the planting around the oak trees typically is the canopy is an indicator of the kind of open mulched area that needs to be under oak trees for them to maintain their physical health. So these are the concerns that I'm bringing tonight, and I thank you for listening.
I can answer two or three of your questions.
Great.
One, our forester has been out there, is monitoring and advised on the design. Banquet hall is out of question, it can't be.
Okay.
That can't happen. The subsurface gas station, we know there were no gas tanks there. It was a repair shop, whatever, and didn't involve underground tanks.
Okay.
So the soil is not contaminated. Traffic department did review and made modifications to Verdugo Road just because that market is going in there. So our engineers have looked at that traffic situation there.
Is there, is there any concern at all on the council's part about repetition of businesses?
We have nothing to say about that.
Okay.
And discretionary review, I think Mr. Howard will tell you, that just can't happen.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we're beyond that point now, unless we determine that there was some flaw or some misrepresentations in the applications for permits.
He can break ground tomorrow.
Well, but that's, that's a question I was going to ask. There is a market liquor store that's literally adjoining to this property, so there's nothing in our zoning code to prevent us from, I mean, don't we have situations where we won't let a business get a liquor license, et cetera, et cetera?
My understanding is this business has not applied for either a CUP or a liquor license. If they do so, we can certainly look at the over-concentration issue, which is outlined under state law and that the zoning administrator looks at, if someone files for a CUP for a liquor license.
To be, Mr. Mayor, to be clear, I was told they'd applied, but it was denied, but they withdrew the application before the denial was published, but that they had, Hassan, they had applied?
I was told that they did apply, they were denied.
That's what I was told.
And they did not appear.
Either way, they don't have.
Yeah, either way, they don't have one, and they'd have to come back for a CUP if their intent was to sell liquor or to have liquor in form.
They'd have to wait six months to apply again.
That's right. Six months if it's been denied.
And the police would weigh in.
So currently, they're proposing a market without liquor sales.
That's right. And if they were to propose another CUP, again, it would be public, it would be subject to a public hearing and notices, et cetera.
Require conditional use permit.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
As we can do. Monitor the site. Okay, Jack Chivanyan? Are you the last one to speak? Is anybody else going to speak on this?
No.
You're it. Okay.
Hello. My name is Jack Chivanyan. I live at 1829 Los Encinos Avenue. That's approximately five buildings up from that corner. And the main concern that comes, I pretty much have two concerns, is, is traffic, okay? And I know we cannot predict traffic, but let's be realistic, traffic is going to be there when something, you know, when another business comes up, okay? And Los Encinos is pretty much a, I would consider it a one-way street almost because of the parking situation, and the residents, and same with Alpha, okay? And the residents in that area pretty much know, know each other's cars, know, know when somebody's coming. They're very considerate, pull over and let the, let the other car go, whether you're going, entering or exiting. So my concern is, I have children that play with the neighbors, that play with the other neighbors, I mean, we have a lot of kids playing, and you already have speeders. And the main concern is, are these, what's going to happen when, when the people who come around the corner to go to that liquor store, excuse me, not the liquor store, but the, you know, that market, find no parking, and they speed, making a U-turn, you know, and parking in our spot, which there's no parking as it is, okay? It's pretty much, everybody knows, you know, you don't park in, well, it's not like that's my parking spot, I understand that, but neighbors are very considerate, they park, you know, in front of their in front of their own home. And another really, really main concern is my parents' business at Palace Liquor, okay? We, I mean, he, my, my family has been there for about seven years, we've been in South Glendale for almost, you know, 30 years in Glendale, okay? And what happened with, with South Glendale, allowing other stores with the same similarity, liquor license, food license, whatever it is, okay, within five feet of each other? You know, I mean, that's what South Glendale is. Please don't make North Glendale like that, okay? That's why North Glendale is what North Glendale is, the community is what it is, okay? It's like one big family up there, okay? And coming around that corner, okay, you're going to have people trying to park, parallel park, delivery trucks. Concern is, those, those delivery trucks are big, okay? And my parents do have the parking structure allowing them to make safe turns and everything like that, okay? So what happens is, where are they going to park to deliver to the grocery store? Employee parking, parking over the weekends for the park? I mean, you're going to create a conflict of my, with my father or with my family, because people want to park at our location and walk to that store, okay? I mean, we, we don't want, I mean, we, we like to help Glendale, we want to see Glendale rise, okay? We don't, we don't want to just create a conflict where, where's my father's customers or their clients going to park, when people are down the street purchasing from them? Okay? And coming around that corner is a major issue, there's a lot of speeders. So when, when you're talking parallel parking or making fast turns, we have an accident there, I would say, once or twice every month to two months. So please, I mean, please let's consider, you know, you know, putting that type of business over there.
I think all I can say to you at this time, they have a legal right to go ahead, but as I said a couple of weeks ago here, is you people are the eyes and ears of the city. We need to hear from you. When it opens, if these things start to occur, we need to know down here. If we have to go in and make changes, whatever they are, we need to know. We can't be everywhere. So we're looking for people like you, the neighbors, whatever, let us know. If there's a problem, we'll address it somehow.
Okay. And another thing that, I believe Paul mentioned, was we, we have never received any type of design review, nothing in the mail saying that either attend or anything like that.
At Palace Liquors or at the residence?
At my residence, at 1829 Los Encinos. I mean, you put a small sign, you hide it inside, behind trees, fine, it's posted, but we don't know that.
We'll check that one, too.
Thank you.
Five doors away, you should have been noticed. Okay, nobody else to speak on 2830? Okay, Leon Mayor's next? Did he, oh, you're, you're here. Come on, Leon. Didn't see you there.
I've been here since 6:00. My name is Leon Mayor, and I'm here on behalf of the library and the Friends of the Library. I've been chairman of the Author, Artist and Friends series for almost six years now, and we've had some fantastic speakers, outstanding authors from all over the country, coming to Glendale to share their books, talk about their books, sell their books. And incidentally, when I talk about an author coming to the library, it means I want you to buy the book at the library. Don't buy it at a bookstore, and I'm not in competition with the bookstores as such. We get a percentage of the books that are sold at the library. We always have them for sale. Incidentally, Mr. Acting Mayor, members of council, staff, I'm glad to tell you that we have two things going on right now. First of all, we have the One Book, One City program, and this is about two authors, they're Japanese ladies, and they've written books about the internment that occurred after World, or during World War II, of Japanese Americans. And there were Japanese Americans in our community, and this is important to our community and to the world, so to speak, to our country, that we are having them talk about the experiences of the internes right after Pearl Harbor broke out. And we have a program, I'm not going to take the time at this late hour to go into the details of the program, but there's meetings, there are book studies, and you can get your programs at any of the libraries or the central library, or you can get one of the newsletters that I have, which also have how you can join the Friends of the Library at the very end. The next event we're going to have, the formal event we're going to have on behalf of the Friends, is John Dean, October 24th, 7:00 in the evening, and he's going to talk about his book, Broken Government. Now, John Dean is nationally known and one of the great authorities now on what's happening in Washington DC. And the book Broken Government talks about federal government, the various branches of the government, and what moderate people can be, can do about it, whether they're Republicans or Democrats. He talks about how the extremism and authoritarianism from political leaders of our country has to be examined, and he's the one who's written a book going into this subject area. Now, when you, when you talk about broken government, I want to be complimentary of what I've seen, especially tonight, dealing in a very sensitive area. All of you are, I don't see any broken government here in Glendale, let me say that. He's going to talk about the federal broken government. I admire what you do, and I admire the people who come here, whether you agree with them or not, or however they're expressing their opinion, they're here, taking their time to express their opinion, and I'm complimentary of all these people who come in here and, and speak their mind. Now, getting back to John Dean, he's another famous person that we've been able to bring to Glendale, we've had him here before. And I was at the Board of Education, talking about these subjects this afternoon, so I've been sitting and listening and doing a little talking today in both arenas. And I admire the way the Board of Education has worked with community organizations, and that's what they were doing today. And I, again, I admire the process here. I ran for Congress in 1962, and I never got to the local level, the way you folks are doing it, and I'm really complimentary of you. But I invite you to come to the Glendale Library on the 24th of October to meet John Dean, and anybody who brings their children, their high school, their family members, this will be an opportunity to meet Mr. Dean. I will assure you that you can talk to him, I'll arrange for any student who comes to the library to meet Mr. Dean personally and talk to him. So we'll see you then. Thank you very much.
Speaker Linda LaLionne, I guess she left. Bruce Philip, followed by Cynthia Lloyd-Jones. Bruce, you're on.
I'm sorry. I thought you meant this.
No, you're next.
None of them. I apologize.
Followed by Cynthia.
Thank you. I'm sorry, just hit this to get a slide. Oh, best practice, okay? Good evening, Mayor Protam, members of the council, city management, public. The subject matter for the, the next two weeks will address the issue of emergency medical and fire responses, the time it takes to get to the scene of those emergencies, and pertinent policies and practices. The Glendale Fire Department's response average on medical calls is around 4 minutes and 24 seconds, and 5 minutes and 26 seconds on fire calls. One valuable aspect of the fire culture is that firefighters view the issue of emergency response time as a principal measurement of their performance. They refer to this as a best practice. The best practice for emergency response occurs when the engine and truck companies, and the firefighters, and the rescue ambulance, ambulances, and the paramedics are in their district fire stations, ready to respond. The nine neighborhood fire stations are generally located near the geographic center of their districts, so that they have the ability to respond in any direction with similar response times. This practice is known as geographic integrity, and is one of the hallmarks for rapid response. Anything less than that has the potential of impacting the performance of adding seconds or minutes on emergency calls. Excuse me. I have copies of my presentation, I just gave to the city clerk. At a recent budget session, you heard from former Fire Chief Gray, Deputy Fire Chief Howard, and Fire Union President, Captain Stavros, that seconds count on fire, rescue, and medical responses. Emergency response times have been a reoccurring discussion point over the issue of speed bumps. On that subject, former Fire Chief Gray has said repeatedly that speed bumps cause emergency vehicles critical delays, where precious seconds count for a person who is having a life-threatening medical emergency. No one will argue that on any given call, the life of a person could rest upon the time it takes for the first responders to arrive. Thanks to former Chief Gray, several engine companies are now staffed with one paramedic, and that is a good beginning. However, there is a disconnect in the bedrock principle that rapid response time will not be compromised at the expense of risking public safety. A current policy in the Fire Department allows for delays of up to four additional minutes on emergency calls. That is a significant increase in, in response times. This specific policy is found in Chapter 4 of the Glendale Fire Department Policy and Procedure Manual. It allows for first responder firefighters to jog or run in remote parks or around a two-block neighborhood adjacent to their district fire stations. A top-level fire official recently called this "the 92nd Delay Policy," quote unquote. This policy is flawed, and it has two methods of causing potential life-threatening and unnecessary delays. The first allows engine companies to drive to assigned locations, sometimes at the farthest end of their district, and in two cases, actually beyond their fire district boundaries. Firefighters park their engines and trucks and run up to a quarter of a mile away from the apparatus. In fact, one engine drives to a county-operated park at the extreme end of its elongated district in violation of this very policy, because its assigned location for jogging is at a centrally-located high school. Those who train hard, become exhausted, and could not, would not be in suitable physical shape to perform optimally on a call. They all wear running shorts and shoes and carry portable radios. When a call comes in, the firefighters have, have to jog back to the parked engine or truck and change into their appropriate uniforms, one kind for a medical call, and another for a fire call, before they can begin the response. After 40 years of walking through Brand Park, I can attest to this activity. Besides the driftshake engine, Engine 27, I observed engines and truck companies and rescue ambulances from Fire Station 26 jogging or walking in groups of eight. I'll conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The policy requires, oh, sorry, Cynthia Lloyd-Jones. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam, Council. The policy requires that they complete their one-hour jogging sessions before 9:30 a.m., which unfortunately for the public is a fairly high emergency call volume time of day. In researching this, I found that there are four-minute delays on medical emergency calls, or about twice the length of an average response. I randomly selected four emergency calls with Engine 27 responding from Brand Park. I discovered that two of them logged six-minute response times, one took seven minutes, and one at eight minutes, all significantly above the average. In Fire District 27, many of the calls are injury-traffic collisions on or near the freeway, and on highly-traveled commercial streets like San Fernando Road and Glen Oaks. These high-volume call areas are located at the opposite end of Brand Park where the jogging takes, takes place. Had the firefighters on Engine 27 been in their district fire station when they began these responses, they would have been within their average response times. About 90% of Engine 27 calls are for medical emergencies, commonly heart attacks, strokes, and injury-traffic collisions, the kinds of emergencies where the outcome can rest on just a few precious seconds. On page 32 of Civic Technologies' final report on medical emergency responses, it states under Section 3.6.3 regarding excessive delays, quote, "There is a relatively high number of failed incidents around Station 27," end quote. This is due in part to a direct result of the firefighters running in this remote park when the emergency calls come in. There are numerous other examples of failed incidents that are directly related to this policy in other fire districts as well. The second part of this policy permits firefighter, firefighters to jog as far away as two blocks from their assigned fire district stations. They carry radios so they can be alerted to a call and run back to, as quickly as possible to the fire station. This policy has a built-in delay factor that cannot be justified in the light of options. This policy does, in fact, add minutes to emergency calls. With nine engine and three truck companies each taking up to an hour running in parks or jogging around a two-block radius of the fire station, it amounts to up to 12 hours of each shift where the risk of adding several minutes to the emergency calls exist. Fortunately, there are options that accomplish both objectives, keeping emergency personnel and equipment at maximum readiness for emergency response, and keeping firefighters physically fit. All nine stations have fitness rooms that contain all of the necessary equipment to keep firefighters in fine physical condition, offering both aerobic and weight resistance training equipment. There is no need to leave the fire station grounds to get a good workout. The current policy permits that emergency response delays of up to four minutes by allowing remote off-site and out-of-district locations to jog is simply unacceptable. Fire Department management and union officials have acknowledged that every second counts on the outcome of medical emergency, fire, and rescue calls. This can mean the difference between life and death. Next week, we will address another policy that evolved out of operational practices that created many more unnecessary delays on emergency responses. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Next speaker, Mary Allen, followed by Herbert Milano.
Thank you.
Okay, Herbert Milano, followed by Evelyn Hansen.
My name is Herbert Milano. Mayor Protam and members of the city council. The residents around Glendale High School have, have come several times, I guess for the past year, trying to address a very significant problem that they have. That is the problem of significant traffic congestion and lack of parking. The parking problem is so severe that sometimes they can spend over 15 minutes just looking for a place to park. That particular problem arose out of a success, the success that this council helped with regard to the artificial turf that was installed at Glendale High School. The demand for adequate parkland for, for soccer teams and other types of play has been so great that all kinds of groups are clamoring for the use of Glendale High School. There is a genuine need for additional parkland, play areas, soccer areas, and so forth, and I'm glad that you're taking those up next week, as you try to consider some of the tax increment funds that are available from redevelopment. But I have a document here that shows some of that difficulty. This is called the City Park Acreage Deficiency by Planning Area. The blue areas are the areas that are adequately provided with parkland in the city of Glendale. The red and yellow areas define the areas of severe deficiency. Those deficiencies have been exacerbated during the past 10 years, and those deficiencies should have been addressed properly by proper city planning and proper city policy, as defined and as indicated in the strategic plans and the draft in final environmental impact reports. Those are reports that are generally provided as disclosures to the general public with regard to how the city- regard to how the city plans to mitigate the problem that has been accumulated. These problems with regard to these areas in South Glendale have not only not been mitigated, they have been exacerbated, and the objectives of the city to mitigate the problems with additional parkland, as stated in many of your documents, have not been followed. The draft environmental impact report for the Greater Downtown Strategic Plan stated that our objective, or the city's objective, was to increase parkland by at least a minimum of 18.3 acres, and that was never done. And the problem comes around when citizens want to obtain some type of relief in order to have the city comply with those documents and those stated objectives that are defined and clarified in those environmental impact reports. And the only choice the residents have, the only choice if the city refuses to follow them, is a lawsuit. The city then takes its option as to who is going to represent them and how much you're going to pay. So it is not my choice if the city chooses to hire a team to practically charge $1,000 an hour to defend the city on the fact that they did not follow through on their stated objectives on the downtown-specific plan, which was supposed to follow the Greater Downtown Strategic Plan. These are very important issues. So when we went to court, we have one attorney, my attorney, versus 10 individuals that were representing indirectly and directly the city of Glendale. Senior attorney at $460 an hour, his assistant at $350 an hour, the assistant to the assistant $250 an hour. You know, if you, it is your choice of how you decide to defend the city on a document that should not be defended to that extent for something so very basic as it is to provide the residents of Glendale adequate parkland and do something about mitigating the problems of excessive overbuilding. It is unfortunate that it's presented as if it were some type of damage that is aimed at the residents of Glendale. I was a resident of Glendale for many years, and I experienced personally the shortage of parkland. And the place where I used to take my kids, this Blue Area 11, I didn't know, two blocks away from Mr. Weaver's house. That's probably one of the best parks that the city has in terms of its compactness and with regard to all the amenities that it provides residents, but these residents don't have it, and so it is an issue of fairness, and that is the issue for which I have been trying to follow, so that all residents of Glendale get the adequate representation and the adequate amenities that they all deserve. Thank you.
Your last speaker, Evelyn Hansen.
Hello again, Evelyn Hansen, longtime resident of Glendale, as was my mother. My mother was one of the founding members of the Glendale Historical Society. She helped move the doctor's house up there. That was a grand event. I was there for it. I dosent there now. Earlier, someone mentioned E-meters. Please put me top on the list. I was one of the first photovoltaic systems on my roof in Glendale. I don't have an E-meter. I really, really need one. I think every photovoltaic system should have one. When my first billing cycle came through, the clerk couldn't understand that an electric meter could turn backwards. Hypothetically, you start at noon, mine went back to 11 o'clock. She charged me for 11 units rather than giving me credit for one. I really need an E-meter. Mr. Milano on water asked that you institute a flat rate as one of the possibilities. Please don't do that to me. I have a half acre to landscape and keep watered as the city codes require it. I'm not supposed to use mulch, which increases my water needs. The city inspector from Neighborhood Services insists that he wants me to put lawn, which is an absolute water hog. I won't have a lawn, it's not natural, it's not environmentally sound, it's not good for the wildlife, and it's not good for Glendale's water usage. Try to get some education to your staff as well as to citizens about using water-safe plants, water-drought-tolerant plants, like I've got in my front yard, and he wants me to rip out to put lawn. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. That closes our communications. I guess we're going to move down to 11.
Number 12, new business?
Yes. I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to file an appeal in the Second District Court of Appeal of California challenging the adverse judgment in the matter of connect to communications, the city of Glendale, case number EC-042453.
Thank you. Is there a second?
There's a second.
I will call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Intero.
Yes.
Yusefian, Mayor Najarian, Mayor Protem Weaver.
Aye. And I guess we'll adjourn the memory of Dick Kemp.
And Ray Dorsey.
Ray Dorsey.
Stand adjourned.
Is there a motion and a second to adjourn?
Yes, there is a motion to adjourn.
Pick one.
A second.
A second.